To tell you buddy, these ain't too damn uncomfortable either, they get rather hot from time to time.
Let me call this meeting to order, we first have the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, as we start a new year, help the leaders in this room chart a course for our county that looks to the future of our children, cares for the least fortunate among us, and brings opportunity to all of our community. We also ask that you keep us always mindful of our responsibility to all of our citizens. Amen.
Dear Lord, I have several changes to the agenda. I would like to add fifteen point two thirty-seven eleven A five, closed meeting item for prospective business that has not been announced yet. As the agenda indicates, striking section item five B, service awards. And just to make the announcement at seven o'clock, our public hearing that had been scheduled for the subdivision ordinance amendment has been canceled and will be rescheduled by you all later in the meeting. Those are all the changes that I have.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All against in like sign? None? Agenda. Next, we will move, since this is your first meeting of the year, an organizational minute to elect your officers, Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, and Chief Deputy Clerk, and so forth. I will open up the floor for nominations for Chair.
I nominate Teal Goodwin.
Second.
Name of Mr. Goodwin has been submitted, duly seconded. Any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed in like sign?
Thank you. Alright, next on the agenda would be the election of the Vice Chairman. Open the floor for nominations. I nominate Lee Frank. Okay. Any further nominations? In that case, we'll close the nominations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Clerk and Chief Deputy Clerk.
That would be myself as interim county administrator as Chief Clerk, uh Chief, as Clerk, and then...
I nominate Brian David as the Clerk. And Allison as the Deputy Clerk.
Okay.
I'll second that if you want to second.
Sure. Alright, any further nominations? In that case, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Uh, the determination of the tiebreaker. Do we want to change anything from what we have currently?
No.
No.
No. Okay. All in favor of leaving it as is? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, the two thousand four regular meeting schedule, any issues with that, or is it good as is?
I move that we approve the schedule as presented.
Okay, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, annual review of the bylaws, any changes? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve it as currently stands.
So moved.
Second.
Alright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Appointment of board members and staff to various boards, commissions, committees, and organizations.
That was just fun.
This is like a swap shop, Jim, I'm just letting you know.
I already bartered.
I'll be glad to keep the same ones that I have.
We'll be glad for you to do that.
I'd be glad to add one for you.
That is a great idea, great idea.
I've been, I've been reminded that we need to add the Route Three Steering Committee since it is a standing committee. So I would like to add that to your list.
And we'll add it to yours too. Alright. Well, and I will continue to do the ones I'm doing.
And I as well, so I guess now it's what's... Jim?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I've been, I've been looking to pass along one on my list. Name is still Jim. To another Jim.
I'll do planning commission if you all would.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And also, I would like to share in the Fire Chiefs Association.
Yeah, I'd like to, we'd like to split that.
Okay.
Are you gonna do solid waste to Jim?
I mean, what Grover had before was solid waste in Rapidan Planning District.
Not a problem.
Okay. Well, then as it looks, Shannon, that would give you the Town Council Liaison, River Basin Commission, Criminal Justice Service Board, and VACO Liaison. That gives you the Fleet Subcommittee, Lake Ana Advisory Committee, and the Route Three. I do Airport Economic Development, Orange ODA, Town Council Water Committee, Emergency Planning, and School Board Liaison. You then will do Rapidan, Rapidan Planning District, Solid Waste, Planning Commission, and Fire Chiefs. And Lee, you've got Fleet, Lake of the Woods Liaison, Nursing Home Commission, Solid Waste, Water, Economic Development, Workforce Investment Board, and Tourism.
And Route Three.
And Route Three.
Yeah, I was doing Fire Chiefs and we thought we'd split it, but I think we'd just let it, let Jim have it all.
Okay. Well, if that is the case, um... Okay.
I make a motion that we set the appointments as we just discussed. There you go.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did you say aye, 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 aye?
I think it's good.
It could have been a lot worse.
Okay. Alright.
That's okay, I like it in the heat.
Okay. The consent agenda, can I get an approval on that please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second any further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Okay. Next we have Employee of the Month. You would read the good words, sir.
Yes, sir. Our January Employee of the Month joined the Orange County team just under one year ago. This individual was nominated by several of her peers. Since the beginning of this employee's tenure with the county, she has shown exemplary service and extreme dedication to her job. She is always willing to lend a helping hand and takes action effectively and immediately. Her attitude and demeanor is always pleasant and approachable. This employee is regularly initiating projects without being asked to do so and never complains about an assigned task. She take, she takes on any project with gusto. Her keen eye for details is notable. She takes tremendous pride in her work, which can be seen in her recent successful efforts to help update and improve county property. This employee is a true leader in her department and is a tremendous asset to Orange County. It is with great pleasure, Mr. Chairman, that I present to the board our Employee of the Month. This is Debbie Waring.
I can tell when you saw me earlier, weren't you? Well, thank you very much, we appreciate everything you do and smile for the camp. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good Eagle.
Me too.
Okay, that's fun. Next.
Do you have, there's certificates of election.
That'd be you and me, Jim.
Register.
It's you. Here we go down, I guess we go down there to you.
Yep, the presentation of certificates, Joanne.
Yay!
Did you hear that I put out to you this morning?
No. You and Obama right now.
Yeah, well, I got there at eight thirty. I had until eleven fifty-nine that night, so I'd have been okay. I had time spare.
So, um, I wanted to thank you for your service to the county.
Well, thank you very much. I guess we gotta smile.
Okay.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you. Jim Cruiser, thank you for your service to the county.
His service is just beginning.
On the planning commission.
Thank you for your essential service to the county.
Okay. Next then, we have the introduction of Wanda Reed, Workforce Center Coordinator.
Hi. I'm Lisa Howe with the Culpeper Career Resource Center, and as you know, we've kind of been overseeing the Orange Workforce Center since we opened. And I wanted to introduce Wanda Reed, who's the Center Coordinator here, and she's been with us since September. And I believe you all get our sort of numbers of how many folks are coming into the center through our economic development. So we're averaging about a hundred and thirty-five people a month. We're open three days a week, and we're trying to, on when those days fall on closed holidays, to be open additional days that we do keep up with the three days a week. So, the other thing I kind of wanted to leave with you all is we're getting ready to plan our upcoming job fair in the beginning of March, and we're in partnership with the Economic Development Office here in Orange as well as the Orange Chamber. So they're working with us to promote that. That's something that we used to have, we started it in two thousand and ran it for about eight years, and then with the economy downturn, we stopped. So we're really looking forward to starting that back up again, so it's gonna be March twelfth. And I'll leave these flyers for you to distribute. Do you guys have any questions, or, or are we welcome to come see us?
You say you're seeing about a hundred and thirty a month now?
Yeah, averaging.
Okay. How many do you think you're able to place? I know you don't always get feedback on whose place. Do you have any feels for what that's, what you're being able to do there?
Have you gotten any feel for that? Usually if we don't see them anymore, then they have jobs.
Okay.
That's usually a good sign.
Or they've gotten too discouraged. Okay.
Most people that come into the center want to remain in Orange County. They really don't want to leave the county, I think you've found that too. They're really not interested in commuting at all, so we try to really focus on the jobs in this area.
Do we have any sense of how many jobs we're actually placing each month?
No. It's a little bit kind of hard to tell. It's hard to tell, yeah. But we can get you that information.
I would be interested to know how many we're actually placing out of that.
Because we're sending the numbers each month to the staff, so we can also, a little bit, that she also asks where those folks were being laid off from, what employers in the areas we're sending that to come out as well. So we connect that.
Okay, thank you. What, you're providing some additional support in terms of resume preparation in these kinds of...
We are, the Virginia Employment Commission has a presence there two days a week, and they're providing workshops for folks who are unemployed, as well as we saw a great need to offer basic computer instruction, which is being done there. And, um, and for the month of February, we're gonna offer some prep workshops for how to prepare for a job fair, for the upcoming job fair that I was talking about. So we're gonna be having some workshops there too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome.
Thank you, it's good to be here.
Okay. E nine one one center biannual report, Nikki.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, we come to you and present to you our recap and biannual report of the nine one one center. I did take the liberty of comparing our calendar year numbers since we are able to now statistically measure a whole year from calendar year twelve to calendar year thirteen. Again, we've seen another increase in our nine one one, in our total inbound and nine one one call volume. Call volume from calendar year twelve to calendar year two thousand fourteen has again increased by one point four percent. Over the last three years, we've act, calendar years, we've actually seen a nine percent increase in total inbound calls for the nine one one center. As you know, in the past, I have predicted trend lines, and it seems like we're right on with what our forecasts are. We typically expect to see a two to three percent increase from year to year, so one point four percent is in that ballpark. Uh, we still are monitoring the number of abandoned call rates, 'cause again, that is, shows us a huge issue. Number one, again, if we have, our abandoned call rates are going up, do we, A, not have enough people to answer phones, or is it B, that I've got a training issue? Uh, looking at our abandoned call rates, we are keeping steady, which is a good sign for us, that it shows that it's not a training issue, and that sometimes the call volume is just too much. An example would be a car accident on Route Three. It will typically generate anywhere from twenty to thirty calls, and with two people answering nine one one phones, something's going to get missed unfortunately, there's just physically not enough people to answer that much call volume. Um, just to note, every single abandoned call that we do receive in the nine one one center is logged and is called back, and we do try to make connectivity to anybody who calls nine one one. So we don't just ignore the aban, nine one one abandoned calls, they are, we do actually make connection and find out if there's an emergency or not. Our calls for service, and what we mean by that again, is the time we're physically actually having to do something as a dispatcher. Uh, we may not dispatch a fire truck or an ambulance on every single call, but we may have to contact the utility company, we may refer something to animal control. Again, that's workload that we want to measure for the dispatch center. We again saw a one point eight percent increase in call volume from calendar year twelve to calendar year thirteen, and have seen a seven percent increase in the last three years. That impact is reflecting, if you ever look at the sheriff's office numbers and also the fire rescue numbers, you see their numbers are going up, and they coincide with it also. Uh, the sheriff's office has had a three and a half percent increase in call volume, and fire and rescue has had an eleven percent in call volume. So it would make sense for our call, it starts with us, so it would make sense for our call numbers to go up. Our staffing and retention, again, we're holding steady, which is kudos to my staff and all the work that they have done with the work plan that they implemented, the changes that they have made and the support that the county has given to us. Um, I did lose one full-time employee, and I say I kind of lost her, because she did go to part-time status. She is young and was offered a job in the city of Alexandria and was able to move up there. She had no commitments really in this area. And, um, good for her to go and better herself, I'm not the person to stand in the way of that. But she did remain on with us as a part-time employee. Over the summer, we did lose one of our trainees, and he was unable to meet the training objectives for the nine one one center. And such a shame, an amazing kid, and I would give him a good recommendation, an amazing recommendation if I was, if he ever asked me for one, but he just couldn't do the job and was honest and upfront with us about him. As of January twenty-first, we will be back up to fully staffed, and we have hired an employee who has five years of previous dispatching experience. So we're excited to get her on board with us and get her through to, through the training. Um, our systems are all functioning very, very well. I joke around and say that Larry really actually works for me, not the county. But I'm giving a Larry a little bit of a reprieve right now, since it's just Larry in the IT department. I did help him out with his interviews yesterday. Our CAD system, we are again working through the beginning stages of upgrading our CAD system. We realized that when we went to go work on our EMD grant program, our CAD system needed updating. It wasn't severely outdated, it was just one software wouldn't work with the other. And that's typical normal life cycles of any type of computer system. So we're in the beginning stages of that. Our radio system, as we know, at five o'clock today, we're gonna have a discussion on our CIP agenda about the radio system and about some of the future challenges that are coming along with that. Uh, we do know that we're reaching end of life on just simply the radio consoles that are in the nine one one center. The PCs and servers have to be replaced this year, and again, that's due to the Windows XP. And unfortunately, that's the cost of doing business with end-of-life cycles. Um, we're also trying to tackle the Route Three solution. Route Three, uh, communications is limited. There's other areas in the county that have weak and poor communications. There's other areas in the county that have excellent communications. Route Three has taken a top priority for fire rescue and for the sheriff's office because of the growth that is in them. It is the second busiest area in the county, so we know we need to tackle that first to try and improve communications with that. So again, we'll talk more and further and more in detail during our CIP, um, project work discussion. Our EMD program is fully functional, and again, we're just working with both vendors to make sure that we can upgrade and get the, the best services there. And again, that's all being supported by grant funding. We still have an accredited facility without the latest and greatest tools. And again, that goes back to my staff for maintaining the quality assurance process that has to be done, and that is required of the state to maintain that accreditation status. Our Vesta Palace phone system, in my memo when I wrote this, our target date was to actually get the install from March two thousand and fourteen. This has been, has been pushed back to April, I did talk to the engineer the other day and our project manager, and that did get pushed back a couple weeks. But we're okay with that, and we're very, very excited, and I did receive the scope of work from them last week. So we're excited to get that system up and running and get that in, installed in April. So that will be a big, huge, um, step for us. M-SAG and Eagle, we're working with the planning and zoning department. We're also working with IT to come up with a solution. Currently, the Eagle system sits on computers that again are Windows XP. And again, the end, April end-of-life cycle is approaching fast rather than later. Um, IT and I have, uh, working on this project to, again, come up with a long-term solution with this. And then still again, working on the GIS and county project for, how are we gonna fix this problem? Where is the long-term planning effects for the county? Um, our domain server is working fine, our generators at the Gordon Building, we are still testing that. Our battery backups are working well, uh, we've actually worked with IT, even though the EOC doesn't really directly fall under me. I know that came part of the planning too, once we started looking at the nine one one stuff, it just migrated into the EOC also. We do have some more questions for the board about generators and their future. And again, a lot of that depends on the radio system. If we do one thing, is it the right generator today, or in five years' time, am I gonna need a different sized generator? So we definitely have some questions for the board later tonight. Our facility, um, it's still here. But again, we are, we are working. The new furniture that we put in, if you walk in there, again, it just feels more comfortable. And again, we're always coming up with ideas and ways to tweak it and just to make it feel more comfortable and work a little bit more efficiently. So it's, it's a never-ending project, we can always, always be better. In calendar year two thousand and thirteen, we have done a lot of things. And again, this is from the support of staff in the county to be able to accomplish this. We have installed I am responding into the E nine one one center, uh, which allows us actually to see if firefighters are responding or ambulances are responding to the station to get units out. We also brought Culpeper County on board, uh, so Rapidan is actually part of that solution too, since they do have first due in Orange County, so that's been huge too. All staff has undergone training to meet the APCP thirty-three minimum training requirements for public safety telecommunicators. Uh, we continue to look at our staffing needs. Having that supervisor's position has been wonderful for us. We are seeing the need, uh, with the call volumes increasing, that do we need three people here from twelve to twelve? And it's leaning towards yes, back in two thousand and eight, we used to have ten people, we used to do that. And now our call volumes are even more than in two thousand and eight. So again, having that supervisor's position has been a great asset to the nine one one center. We were able to redo all our county mapbooks. We developed an actual eligibility list for hiring, so even if we don't hire you today, six months from now, we can actually now go to this eligibility list, and that has been, administratively, that has been done wonders for us. Uh, we completed the space needs assessment, we implemented a quality assurance program, we received grant funding for EMD, we received grant funding for the Vesta, um, four dot X NG nine one one phone upgrade. We awarded four lifesaving awards. We implemented a new field training program, which has had great success. We again kept up with awarding our communications officers of the year, the Communication Officer of the Year, Trainee of the Year, and Part-Time Employee of the Year. We've maintained our accreditation status, we've implemented the code red notification system. We completely revamped all of the nine one one SOEs, and we completed any outstanding CAD, CAD projects that we have. We implemented our new yearly evaluation, and that is actually specific to E nine one one and the job that we actually do. And again, with, actually, this month, we're actually doing the yearly evaluations, and the feedback so far from staff has been wonderful on that. And we completed our radio and pager CIP project. Uh, we still see the future, we know we're gonna be extremely busy, and if you haven't figured that, that's how I thrive. We continue to work on the nine one one building location, um, preparing to install the Vesta, uh, system, working to prepare the radio consoles and what we're gonna, how we're gonna tackle the end-of-life solutions. Uh, continue talks, again, not just with Motorola, but hopefully, um, some other vendors about what is the best path, best path of a new radio system. Again, we're continuing to work with IT to develop the strategic plans, so we're not again up here asking, 'cause it's already broken, but we've got a five-year plan, hey, we know this, this, and this need to be replaced. We're hoping, still hoping to deploy Smart nine one one in May. I'm actually able to send, um, my supervisor to go meet with reps from Smart nine one one to hopefully tackle this problem once and for all and get it solved. And, um, again, if it wasn't from the support of the county, we wouldn't be able to do that, because we actually have Smart nine one one, we're taking advantages of being one of the first in the state. There's some benefits to that. Uh, we're gonna finally upgrade our CAD and install the EMDs I've talked about, upgrade our CAD maps, as you've heard me talk about, and continue to, um, with our dispatch education. We have new staff, staff changes, so again, we want to make sure that they're also meeting that P thirty-three standard and getting the training that they need. And again, continue to implement and review the work plan that was developed by the county administrator, the nine one one director, and the communications officers. So FY, uh, calendar year fourteen also looks to be, um, challenging, and we're, we're looking forward to it though also. That's all I have.
I've got a couple of questions. Of the fifty-seven thousand calls, you get, about a third of those are nine one one.
Correct.
What makes up the majority of the other two-thirds?
A lot of it is administrative, um, type calls that we deal with, and what I've calculated is the fifty-seven is total inbound and outbound calls.
And outbound, so if you're calling, uh, if you're calling the electric company or something like that, that counts as a call.
Exactly, and again, that's just to depict the workload. You can't just measure nine one one workload by what comes in, because, uh, because of things like that.
A second question is, I see you got a calls for service of about seventeen thousand. But we have roughly five or six thousand that we are actually responding to. Are the others duplicates, or, uh, where does the difference there between the number of times we're actually responding and, and the number of calls for service?
Again, going back to how we would handle a nine one one abandoned call, that gets logged as a call for service. And if I go back to my nine one one inbound calls, I can tell you, on average, a third of them are nine one one hangups or abandoned.
Really?
A third of the call volume is law enforcement, and a third of the call, call volume is fire and EMS.
Okay.
So, on average, we take about sixteen thousand nine one one calls. So when you start, if I round down at fifteen thousand, it's five thousand each. So, any call that comes in through nine one one is logged into our CAD system, again, because it produces workload.
Okay, so, but when you, but, but this doesn't include, that seventeen thousand doesn't include duplicates for the same, for the same incident?
No, 'cause we can actually link those incidents together, which we typically do.
So what you're saying is about a third of them are, are hangups, about a third of them are, uh, uh, fire and about, fire and rescue, and about a third are sheriffs?
Correct.
Okay.
I actually have a question as well, and you may cover this later on. The M-SAG books and the CAD, what is being done, or what are the plans to correct the erroneous street locations and street names that, that exist, especially in the eastern end of the county, but county-wide?
Uh, we have worked with planning and zoning, and we've been working with a consul, a, um, I can't think of the word, consultation, so, company, if that's the correct word, I apologize, by the name of Timmons Group, to help develop a long-term work plan. Uh, they did come up with a short-term, uh, plan for us of what we need to do. So they came up for a plan for a plan, and, um, we're just waiting, they're waiting on one last piece from me to make sure that the data that we, we supply them can be merged into our CAD system, so that we're operating one mapping system that works into the CAD system. So we're just waiting on the final report. So we're just waiting on the final report of that and I would. It's about a month out or give or take.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you, Nikki.
Okay, uh next we have public comment. Is anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. Member Chairman, we have one speaker signed up. Bert Robey, three seven four Green Fields Drive, Orange.
Just wanted to show y'all first of all that I do clean up nice. Mister Chairman and members of the board, my name is Bert Robey. I'm the Fire Chief of the Orange Volunteer Fire Department. And I'm here representing the Orange County Volunteer Fire Chiefs Association. And I am here to speak, as I said, on behalf of the Fire Chiefs Association in favor of the board um moving forward with the adoption of the Fire Prevention Code. And uh using our Fire Marshal in order to be able to do building inspections. Your Chairman and Vice Chairman have already had the benefit of my rants about this. For the benefit of all of you, I'm gonna try to keep it to mild enthusiasm for this presentation. Each year, the Board of Supervisors is very generous and funds a lot of money to the fire departments in the county. And we appreciate that and we hope maybe you'll give us a little more this year. But the fact of the matter is, unlike the school system where you fund success, right now, what you're funding with the fire departments is you're funding failure. Failure because something has gone wrong in the county because people have called nine one one and they need the fire department to come and help them. It may be something very simple. It may be an auto accident, but it may well be a building fire or something of that nature. And so each time we go out and turn the lights on, it indicates that somebody has failed and that's what you're paying for. You have the opportunity now to start to fund success. And the success is by allowing the Fire Prevention Code to be adopted and to have an inspector who can go out and do that. And you already have a person in place with Craig Johnson and catch some of these failures before they truly do become failures. Um the, there are, this is the opportunity to go out and find things that are wrong and get them corrected through cooperative effort with the, with the property owner. Before it becomes something that's a fire and requires the response of, of the fire departments. This, this is an opportunity and I, I know, cause I've talked to several of you, obviously, uh I've talked to Mister Crozier as well. I, I know there, that some of you heard concerns from the business owners in the, in the county. That this would be something that would cause them a great deal of problem, that they might have to spend a lot of money, that they might even have to close down and move out of the county. I think that that is, is just the opposite of what the situation would be. I think the situation would be that I know John and I know Craig and I've worked with them for a long time. I think this would be a situation where there would be a, a helping effort in place to work with business owners to correct problems. Uh without going to something punitive like issuing summonses or anything. And in that way, it would help to uh maintain those businesses. I've given you, I've given a handout that I passed around. These were a couple of websites. And I, I wanna cite just those things because I think it's really important to realize um exactly what the situation is. When you do have a situation where you, where you have a fire. The first one there, it uh should say Business Planning for Disaster Survival. And the, the first paragraph there, forty percent of businesses do not reopen after a disaster, which would include a fire. And another twenty-five percent fail within one year according to the, according to FEMA. Similar statistics from the United States Small Business Administration indicate that over ninety percent of businesses fail within two years after being struck by a disaster. The other article that's there is an article and I'm not gonna try to read that to you because I know your time is valuable and I appreciate you giving me this time. But it goes into some of the things that are actually the positives about ha- having uh fire inspections done. As a businessperson, that person's job is to run a business. It's not to know when there's a problem in the building or with the business or whatever it might be that may in sometime in the future lead to a fire. Uh we went to a call just yesterday here in the town of Orange, a fairly large building. Uh they uh, they, we were called for an odor investigation. Went in and found out that they had a number of outdoor weed eaters and, and leaf blowers, gas-powered leaf uh in the building. One had turned over and spilled a whole bunch of gasoline inside the building. Now, if that building had been, had caught fire, rather than them, they didn't know what the problem was, they just had an odor. If they had been a fire, uh that building was owned by somebody in the county. It was, the business was operated by someone in the county. The fire department with volunteer contingent, a number of fire departments, would have had to go to that fire. And in all likelihood, there would have been serious damage and potential injury and, and that kind of thing. Whereas those kinds of things could be caught ahead of time and those kinds of incidents could be prevented. Really, I think that, you know, the, the main job of a, of a fire inspector is to make sure that the building remains safe. The building inspector's job is to make sure that it's built safe, all the designs are in place to keep it safe, like proper exits, proper markings, all those things. But a fire inspector is gonna be able to go in after the building inspector's finished and continue to watch that building and watch for things that may lead to potential problems. Whether they be potential fire problems such as the gasoline or potential problems with customers because of blocked or locked exits. Those kinds of things that lead to uh the potential for a loss of life. Uh like I said, I, I'll be happy to answer questions, but I wanna close with something that's, that to me is the most important thing of all. Some people may be upset that they're gonna be inspected by somebody. But the fact of the matter is, your job, just like my job, is to provide protection to the citizens of the county. And our number one job is to protect the citizens and the people who are gonna frequent these businesses, restaurants, work in the industries, whatever the situation might be. And we need to protect our citizens. The other thing is, we need to protect our property owners from the kind of loss that's gonna cause them to go out of business at least for a period of time. Uh we had a garage catch fire in uh Gordonsville a couple of months ago. It's still closed. Uh I don't know whether it'll ever reopen or not, but the fact of the matter is, it's still closed because of a fire. So it protects the property owners and the business, the people who run the businesses, uh keeping their properties from being damaged and potentially never opening again. It protects your tax base. We all know how hard it is to attract business into the community. We certainly wanna keep what we got. And we don't want them to close up because they aren't able to uh get back open because they've lost their customer base. Because they were closed for three or four months or six months or whatever it happens to be. Or they just never are able to reopen because they simply don't have the resources and the insurance to reopen that business. And the last thing, and quite frankly, the thing that's most important to me as a fire chief. I always tell my people, you take care of the citizens. I, my job's to take care of you. That's our firefighters. Our firefighters in this county uh and, and EMS people, whether they be career or volunteer, are working their butts off to do a really good job out there to protect our citizens. And, and I wanna protect them. And anytime we have to go out on one of those failures, anytime we have to fight a fire, we put our people at risk. And for, for my department with, with all volunteers, um that's a risk they're taking for free. And that, that's important to me because that's my job. If I, if one of my people gets hurt, I've failed. And uh I, I, I think we have an opportunity, all of us have an opportunity for success. As Nikki has reported, the calls are up. Our fire department ran seven hundred and two calls last year, the second most in the history of the department. And uh, you know, I, I, I'm old. I'd like to see that number drop down a little bit rather than go up anymore. So, and I think you have the opportunity to do that. Uh the Chiefs Association supports this completely. We would support you in our community. We would support you if people came and complained to us and tell them what the benefits are. And, and what the, the potential savings are and, and we would be behind you all the way. The Chiefs Association has been discussing this from some, for some time, as, as, as Lee knows and as, as Teal knows. So, um and so we would be standing behind the board a hundred percent. We'd be standing behind John and Craig a hundred percent. And uh we, we, we just wanna convey to you in, in the strongest possible way, without ranting again, uh how important this is to us that uh we have this opportunity in the county. If, if it's appropriate and if anybody has any questions, I'd be, be happy to try to answer them.
One of the things, I'm, I'm pretty sure I know this, but uh when you're inspecting uh, basically you're inspecting to the condition at which it was built. So someplace that's been built fifteen years ago would not be inspected to today's standards in terms of various things that needed to be installed.
The, I'm, I'm not gonna try to get specific on that because I, I'm not an absolute expert in that. But yes, it, it has to do, if the building, it wasn't required to be sprinkled twenty-five years ago. The Fire Marshal's not gonna go in and say, hey, you need to put in a sprinkler system.
That's, that's what I, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bert.
And hopefully it was mild enthusiasm.
Thank you, Bert. It was easier than when you came to see me. All right, uh no one else in? We close public comment. Any board comment?
Yeah, I got some. Uh first of all, uh I'd like to welcome our new interim county administrator, Brian David here. He's got some great credentials and I've had some opportunity to work with him already and I am duly impressed. I think I'm, I'm gonna be looking forward to a, a nice few months while we, while he's covering for us. I do wanna say something though in his defense. He's uh gonna be uh having to put together a budget. Uh and uh as I think most of us up here know, this is not gonna be an easy budget. So uh don't blame the guy who brings it to us. Uh the other thing I wanted to mention is, uh I saw something on uh legislation being considered in the, in the General Assembly. About uh being able to do uh notifications, formal notifications on the web versus uh, versus doing it. On having to, to pay for notifications in the paper. Uh this hasn't gone anywhere. I know Tom mentioned it, it hadn't gone anywhere and VACO had indicated that, that hasn't made much progress in the past. And what they've done is they put a population limit on it of only thing more than fifty thousand. So uh rather than try to engage that so it would cover us, I think we just let it slide and see if it gets by. Then we can talk about, if it, if it passes, then we can talk about reducing the population to thirty thousand so we would be covered. Anyway, uh so I don't wanna go any further with that. That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, since you keep staring at me, sir. Well, uh I, I'm honored to be here, working with all of you. I look forward to working with everyone. And working everyone just to work in a positive manner for the citizens of the county and do the best that we can. And I'm honored to be up here with you, seeing what you've done the past few years, so. That's basically it.
When they, when they come to uh string us up later?
Absolutely. I, I've gone past my life expectancy anyway.
If the, if the budget comes out real painful, if we got a new board member, we can blame them.
That's right. I, I have broad shoulders.
Okay. Well, with that then, no one else has anything else? We'll move on to the action items. Uh first one would be the award contract for tax bill preparation. Stephanie.
Hello.
Greetings.
Um in late October, I worked with the Commissioner's Office and the Treasurer's Office to solicit a new vendor for tax bill preparation and printing services. This is the company where we export our data. They run the invoices, um laser any messages we have on them and mail them out for us. Uh we posted it locally and on Eva and received a total of seven responses from vendors from six states, actually. Um after reviewing all of the responses, we feel that BMS Direct, which has a stellar reputation here in the Commonwealth and with Orange County. Is the best suited vendor for the job. Um they actually also have experience working with Bright and Munis. So our older financial software and our newer financial software, which is gonna make the conversion easier. And we are requesting um that you allow us to enter into a five-year contract with BMS Direct.
When you uh, when I look at the total of this, the, the twelve thousand is what their bid is and the postage is, we have to pay that for any of the vendors, correct?
Yes, yes. So the twelve thousand is the data processing, printing, sorting.
So what do we do? We give them the uh, we give them the data on disk and they, and they prepare the, the actual mailing?
Mm-hmm. It's an electronic upload and then they work with the Commissioner and Treasurer to, to make sure that um they fit the criteria of how they want the invoices laid out. And then they laser it and mail it.
That would make the motion we approve?
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. And next, the award for the contract for EMS billing.
Here you go. Um as you're aware, on December third, you voted to approve a ninety-day extension to our current EMS billing provider, Fidelis. Um since about September or October, Chief Harkness and I have been interviewing and researching companies to replace our current vendor. Um we sort of took a poll of, of different counties and cities in the Commonwealth to see who they use, why, and what their contracts included. And um we approached two different vendors, interviewed them, asked questions, spoke to their support staff. And have narrowed down our selection to Med three thousand. Med three thousand has eighteen years of industry experience. They also um implement a soft billing approach. And I was really impressed that their staff are held to very high customer service training requirements and expectations. Um they also have a redundant system, so if there's power outages, they have two different servers that have independent backups, which is a good thing. Are there any questions about Med three thousand? We would be using the Fairfax County contract.
I got a question for John. Do we know how they uh, they assemble their data so that we can get information for analysis on how things are doing?
Yes, they have a portal that we can actually pull up, look real time. I think it's broken down a little bit more clearly than our current vendor. So it's a little bit more understandable.
Okay, all right. Are there minimums involved in this at all? The way I read this, it's a percentage of the collections, but is, is there, is there a startup cost or a minimum or anything else? Or is it just a straight percentage?
Straight percentage.
Based on trans, number of transports.
I'd make a motion to approve this.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries five zero. Uh and the last one would be the amendments to the personnel policies regarding the VRS hybrid. Tom?
Uh Mister Chairman, this has actually wound up mine because of the transition from our previous administrator to our interim. And this kind of needed to be addressed in the in, in, in between. As you know, the Virginia General Assembly has required us to implement and adopt a new hybrid employee standard for anybody hired after January first. And they're required to be given disability insurance, long-term and short-term. And they're also in a little bit of a different uh class for VRS. Well, as part of that, we took a look at it, Glenda and Karen and myself. And we realized that we're gonna have to make some adjustments to our personnel manual, primarily dealing with sick time. Because if somebody's getting short-term disability, they only also need sick leave. And so we made a recommended change to the um, the Human Resources Manual. That would cause the new hires after January first, instead of sick leave, they'll have PTO time, which they can use for anything. Because the way the short-term disability will work, it doesn't kick in until the eighth day. And so what we did is we calculated PTO and added an extra week on top of what somebody would normally, what our current employees get for vacation time. We sat and we just did the math and said, well, if we give them an extra week. So the PTO actually shows employees on PTO will actually have five more days than employees of vacation time, but they'll have no sick time. And this, at some point, the board's gonna have to consider whether we wanna have dual tracks for employees. But for now, with some hires coming up, we needed to get something in place, so we had a policy in place. So this is kind of a stopgap suggestion to get a policy in place so that we have, because new hires currently wouldn't apply this. We don't wanna give them sick leave and disability leave. And so that's the background on this and I'll answer any questions or try to answer any questions.
If they go out on sick leave for the first seven days and then on the eighth day, short-term disability kicks in, does it, does our short-term disability kick in at a hundred percent from that time?
It, well, it does not. Here's the other tricky part.
Then no.
New, new employees do not, um, get any dis, do not get disability for the first year under VRS.
Well, then regardless, but I'm saying, when, when you get to a certain, most, most short-term disability companies don't pay a hundred percent until you are at like five years of service. So up until that time, you're only getting sixty-five percent of your pay, so how are they covering that two-point-eight hours a day if we don't, if they don't have any leave? Because we, we, we don't have any, they don't have any leave.
Well, again, I understand a new employee wouldn't have much in the way of bank sick leave either. So for a new employee, the end result is about the same. If they're new, they don't have any sick leave accrued, and so they're in the, in basically the same boat.
Right, but it, but you're saying at a year, so how much sick leave do they have after a year?
Uh, ten days, I think.
Okay, well, ten days at two-point-eight hours, ten, ten, you know, what is that, eighty hours at two-point-eight hours a day? That, that backfills their short-term disability for them.
Except the recommended PTO actually gives them five more, gives them five of those days right up front. And so they, they get the advantage is they get the PTO time. And so half of that is covered in the PTO, so not only will they be getting disability at the end of the year, but they actually get five extra days a year in, in PTO time. And that's what we were trying, and that's the tricky part running the dual system. Is, you know, you're trying to balance the benefits and try and come up with something comparable, because if you give straight-up sick time on top of disability, you're gonna have potential for double dipping and...
You have to qualify for short-term disability. And once you qualify for short-term disability, I mean, I, I, I just know the state gives you sick leave and short-term disability, but you have to qualify for short-term disability. You can't, you can go to a doctor and say you're, you're, you know, you have the flu and you take off a week. You're not going on short-term disability, you're using, you know, your week's worth of sick leave. Short-term disability, you have to meet a certain requirement. I mean, I know you're not, you're just the, I mean, I, I don't mean it like this. You're not the HR person trying to determine this, but I don't know that this is the, I don't know that this is the best suited, um, alternative for that.
Well, and part of this, the suggestion actually came from our provider on the disability. We actually had a Karen and Glenda.
Well, of course they did, because that's what's good for them, but not, maybe not good for the employee.
Well, I don't know that it makes any difference to them. We gotta pay those premiums. I mean, they're good, we're, we're got, we have to pay the premiums, so it doesn't really make much difference to the insurance company.
Question is, is whether we're giving them sick time in addition to whatever they get from this.
Well, the, the issue is exactly that, that, I mean, we have a very liberal sick policy anyway, with unlimited banking of sick time and sick, bank sharing and, and, and so part of the discussion was the fact that current employees don't actually have the benefit, the same benefits of disability. We don't, the short-term, it, basically under VRS, you basi, to get disability under VRS right now, you basically can never come back to work. They have to determine medically that you are done and you can't work. So the new employees actually have a much more generous disability policy than the existing employees will have. And so we're trying to balance those, those issues because you've got this much more generous disability insurance for the new employees. You have the much more generous sick leave with unlimited banking for the current employees, and it didn't seem appropriate to provide the new employees both. That you, not only do you have this much more generous disability coverage, but you also have on top of that, our very generous sick banking.
Well, the way, the ways, way state employees do it right now is you've got the people who fall under the old system where they've got, you know, thousands of hours of sick leave that they, which they get to accumulate. And then the state switched over to a new system and you, you basically, you get X amount of personal leave, um, that you can take for any reason. Um, you get X amount of annual leave and then you get X amount of sick leave each year. The, the personal and sick leave don't accrue. They go away at the end of the year. So if you don't use up all those hours, the, the time goes away. But then you also get short-term and long-term disability where people in the old system don't. So it seems like to me, if we're going to do something like that, you still give people sick leave to use for stuff that doesn't have to go before short-term disability. And then you, um, but then they don't get to accrue their sick leave because they then get the opportunity to have, um, long-term, short-term and long-term disability.
See, the other reason we recommend it going to PTO though is, we have some problem with it now. In that system that you're describing, you have even more problem with it, that people use their sick leave as additional bonus vacation time. Oh, I don't feel well this morning, I'll call in sick. And so you have a percentage of your work population that if that sick leave doesn't accrue at the end of the year, they're gonna use it as additional vacation time and you probably wind up further in the hole. And that's the other reason we recommend going to a PTO system and, and giving an extra five days more than vacation and you can use it for whatever.
So, so if somebody is, let, let's just take somebody who's, uh, gonna be sick for a month. If they are in the old system and they had accumulated enough days, they could be sick. I mean, they can, they get paid for it. Or if they don't have, uh, as many sick days, they can use regular vacation days to cover for that month of being out. Now, for the guy who's new, this system would allow him to take, we've given him, in addition to his vacation days, we've given him five personal days.
Well, there's, we're not even calling vacation anymore. We just said you have PTO, use it for whatever you want.
But we're giving him, we're giving him five extra personal days. So that, uh, that covers the first five days that the disability insurance doesn't cover, and then he is covered for the rest of that month under his disability insurance.
That's how we're proposing it, correct?
Is that, that's how this reads?
That's how we're, and exactly, that's how we're proposing.
What is the difference between the short-term disability payments and, and average employee's salary?
Sixty-five percent, 'cause they only pay out sixty-five percent until, I'm assuming it's five years like it is with the state.
And I did, I'm sorry, I didn't grab the chart. It's actually a staggered chart based on years of service and the number goes up. But I think it starts at sixty and then works its way up.
Yeah. Are the new employees going to be eligible for the sick bank?
Well, our recommendation was no. What I drafted there was no.
Okay. If, if they were eligible for the sick bank, would that make a more equal system for everybody? Or would it balance it too far in other directions?
Well, and the, the reality is what, what we're recommending is a stopgap, which is what we have tonight, with some serious discussion about what we wanna do long-term. Because I, I think it's unwise to have, run a dual system and have two levels of employees. And so I, I think ultimately what we're looking for is a stopgap solution with a, an analysis of a long-term solution and how we wanna address this long-term.
So I go back to my previous example as, uh, Shannon has mentioned. So this person who's new, he would get five extra personal time days off that he takes out of the first part of his month. And then the rest of it would be on disability, but disability is not gonna be paying the same amount on a per-day basis as the, as the sick days were. Sick days were full pay, the disability is some percentage less.
Well, and then you use your time to supplement that income. Um, the, the other, I mean, and, and I guess what, I, I'm now hearing what Tom is saying, there needs to be a discussion. I mean, you know, we talk, he made the comment, will people use their sick leave as vacation? People use their sick leave vac, as vacation if you allow them to use their sick leave as vacation. If you have somebody who misses a certain amount of time and you're not requiring a doctor's note and some serious look into what's going on, then, then that, that's a problem. But if you have an employee who comes to work every day and does what they're supposed to do, you know, that's up to the department heads to determine whether or not they've got an employee that's abusing a system or not. Um, but if we don't have something in case, in, in place for them to utilize that we would require a doctor's note, well then that's our shortcoming for us.
But, uh, uh, independent of the guy using it for, uh, extending his vacation.
Going to Aruba.
Yeah, I'm sick. I'd like to go to Aruba too.
How many new employees are we looking at? That's, I mean, are we affecting one?
It's gonna be any new employee.
Well, anyone from here on out. I think we only have one on the horizon for an immediate hire. I think we got one person.
But, but, so if we put this in place, that we still need to, we still need to have some discussion on how we, how we balance the, the, the two. So this isn't, you wouldn't consider this the final, uh, final version?
No, I consider this, uh, thrown together to stick a finger in the dyke while we figure out how we wanna address this long-term. You know, General Assembly, another unfunded mandate required this. And so the General Assembly throws this on us and we're just trying to, to scramble, because part of the board's decision is, it, do we wanna provide disability insurance, si, of similar generous disability to all of the employees? But that's about a hundred thousand dollars and right at budget time. And so...
So we could, we could actually buy the disability insurance such that instead of getting paid at sixty-five percent his first year of service, they could, uh, it could go up to a hundred.
Well, now, understand in the first year of service, there's no coverage. Anybody in their first year gets no coverage.
You have to, you have to be...
You have to have at least a year of service in your disability.
And it's gotta be full-time employment. It's, you gotta, you gotta meet a certain amount of work hours to get it.
But, but I'll point out a new hire's got no sick leave banked either, so they're in the same boat.
Okay, so, all right. So, uh, okay.
Well, then how about we review this? Because what happens if we hire some people and we've given them these extra days and then we actually go in and change it again? So now only, now we have three different types of leave out there.
When's our new person starting? Do you know?
Maybe we've got one start in the twenty-fourth, so January.
And we could defer it to the next meeting and, and discuss it somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make some suggestions, obviously I'm jumping into this and, uh...
Oh, please, please jump.
I, I certainly hear the county attorney that this was his, uh, working through in the transition and I've been quiet. I know a lot of other counties, uh, and jurisdictions are struggling through this because of, you know, if you unwind the ball, it was the General Assembly going to, to this hybrid, invest your retirement versus the standard, and, and so it kinda accelerates from there. Um, so one of the things we could do is to figure out what everybody else is doing to, to address this, to help you all. But I, I also know that if you have an employee coming in down the pike and we know it, it really is something to get in, in place, and then we could treat whoever comes underneath this, I think in a transition back to, to a, a, a more stable type of, uh, uh, system where it treats everybody. I think that's where everybody's trying to get to is equal treatment and, and how do we get there? And there's certainly budget implications as well.
But if we, if we didn't do anything, that person is not gonna accumulate any sick days for the next year. And so if we're making a transition, wouldn't it be easier to transition from the system we already have than this one?
Yeah, I, I, I have a similar concern. I mean, if you look at the comparison of the two tables, uh, for the two groups of employees, it, it seems to me that, that what we don't wanna do is adopt the new table. Cause it, I mean, it goes less than five years and then it runs out to greater than twenty years. Hopefully we will solve the problem before we get, get there. So it looks to me like that, that the arrangement with any new employees is that they follow the old, the old table with respect to accrual rates and limits and things like that. And we do some kind of an interim fix of five days or whatever you wanna award them as a one-time transition thing.
Could the interim be allowing them to be eligible for the sick leave bank, which I don't believe they currently are?
Well, you, you could theoretically, for now, if, if the goal is a global solution, then you can theoretically just say, we're not gonna do anything today and technically all new hires would fall under what we currently have, as long as there's an intention to, or an understanding that you, you're gonna have to address this sooner rather than later.
Cause for a year, they're not gonna, they're not gonna accumulate anything for a year. And so if we're making, it gives us a...
Right, but once you hire them under that leave, that, that's what he's saying. Once you tell me this is how much leave I get, this is the type of leave I get. We can't, you can't go back in and say, well, we're changing your leave and leaving everybody else's the same.
But the point is, if he hasn't earned any yet.
But they will start earning it.
They're gonna, they start earning from the day they get here. They just haven't, they haven't accrued it.
They can't grab any of it yet. They can't use it yet until the end of the year.
Well, how much, every pay period, they get a certain amount of leave.
You can use what you've earned, not what you, you can't bank it.
But the, the point is, yeah, you can use it as it, you can start using it right away as you accrue it.
As you get it.
The, the, the only, the biggest risk, if you wanna call it a risk, is whatever sick time they accrue, these new hires, if we keep them under the old system, they're gonna accrue sick days too, which are permanent, eternal, you can keep them forever days. And so that's the, the downside to, to doing nothing is that the new hires are going to accrue sick time, sick days as well, which are a permanent fixture.
But what I'm suggesting is that we cap that to some number of days. Maybe it's your five, or maybe it's a, a different number, but...
Or you do like the state does it and it goes away at the end of the year.
Either way, I mean, I, I...
And the reality is, we really do need to have a, a, a significant discussion on this. Part of this was just to get that discussion going, because we need to have a pretty significant discussion.
Seems to me that this is, this is something we'd wanna put in place wh- while we're having the discussion as to how to deal with long-term.
Ideally, you would address all employees at the same time and figure out what system you want. I, in a, in a perfect world, that's what you would do.
But that's why I'm asking, as current policies and procedures are, I believe it's till six months that you cannot be eligible for the sick leave bank?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so if we put a temporary amendment in to allow the new hires to be eligible for the sick leave bank, while we work on this, so that if they do become sick in something where they medically have to be out for X number of days, the other employees can contribute to it and hopefully before anybody other than that one employee gets to that point, we will have come up with a permanent solution.
You can, you could say tonight, we're for the time being, all new hires will just fall under the current system, which that's part of the current system. And you could say temporarily, anybody that's hired is under the current system, but they know when they're hired, it's gonna change. I mean, if you tell them that in advance, they can't complain.
So they're protected initially.
So, I mean, that, that's, as long as you're willing to address it, pretty, as long as we're willing to get it on the agenda and get it addressed and deal with it, then I don't see a lot of harm in doing that, where you say, okay, all new hires, you're temporarily under the current employee system for vacation and sick, but understand that this is all going to change so that nobody says, well, I, you promised me this system.
All right, well, that's the case. Do we wanna look at some options to come back before our next meeting and then?
And I actually have some legal issues for the closed session on this, if you, if we have time, some, some legal aspects of this.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, your support files, so I will get certainly up to speed, more so than I am this evening and, uh, on this. And perhaps, uh, I don't know what the working group had done, is looking at what other localities may be doing. And, uh, county attorney may have already done that, but we may be able to, to do that as well because this issue is being addressed across the state and state. And at least from a, from a practical standpoint, I, I think the more times you can treat all employees the same, then that...
In spite of what the state does to us.
Getting there is the difficult part, but anytime we can get to where equal treatment is and it's, from a management standpoint, that certainly serves, serves everybody's interest.
Well, in that case, let's, let's look at tabling it.
I don't think we need to table it, because this may not be what we wanna bring up.
Yeah, it's, there's no, no serious harm done if you don't decide tonight.
You could just take it under advisement and we'll bring back a, a...
But the one action, sounds like that we, we need to make sure that county administrator, county attorney, someone, uh, properly documents the, the transition period for the new hires, so that there's an understanding of what's gonna happen. So that, whether that's part of an agreement or...
I would sit with Karen and make sure that we brief, that we, the new hires, get properly briefed as to the status of their sick and vacation time and what's gonna happen.
And maybe something in writing, either as part of the offer or a letter. I, I don't know what form it needs to take, but there needs to be some. That seems to be the only action that we really need.
And I would recommend, I mean, you know, definitely reaching out to other department heads and seeing how, um...
How they operate and how it affects.
Well, I mean, recommendations from them.
Now, this, the, the state, the state is doing a, a, a similar process for theirs, but they, how do they do it?
Well, if you're on the old system, I think people that've been there, I mean, state did that years ago.
Understand.
You had, you could opt into the new system or stay with the old. So if you stayed with the old, you get so many, it's kinda like what we've got here. You get so many hours of sick leave a year and you can accrue it and you get to a certain point and they pay you out when you go to relieve or retire or whatever. Everybody else, you get, you only, you get so many hours of sick leave and you get it all up front. From day one, as soon as you come to work there, you get sixty-four hours of sick leave, thirty-two... From day one, as soon as you come to work there, you get sixty-four hours of sick leave, thirty-two hours of personal.
That's, that's, uh.
And you get that, you get that on day one of you coming to work there. But at the end of that year, it goes away, so if you've used it or haven't, you know, if you haven't used it, it goes away. And it, on January ninth of every year, that kicks back in again. So, January night.
How many days was that, that was?
Well, it's, it's sixty-four hours.
Oh, sixty-four hours of, of, uh, sick leave and thirty-two.
Which is the, is the time that you need if you go on long or short-term disability, which is the time you would need to get, you know.
Okay.
Or more than that, really. And you get thirty-two hours of personal.
Okay.
That you use. Plus, you're still accruing, um, annual time as well, but that's, that, that you can, that you can build. But you're, you can carry forward again, and it's kinda like ours too, I think like up to two hundred hours after that, you have to.
Okay.
And then they do, the state does the leave share too, cause you will get emails all the time, you know, somebody needs leave, you donate leave or whatever. But they get the sick leave right up front, but then they're not eligible for the short-term disability until they've reached the, um, hour requirement, which is full-time employment for a year.
Okay, alright.
And, you know.
Okay.
Well, that's one model we could look at.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Alright. Well, let's leave that for now then.
Budget work session, right?
Yep, budget work session at five, public safety, CIP.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Would you like a work session table setup, or do you just wanna have a personal podium?
What, what works for y'all?
Um, well, have we, um, take short recess?
That'll be fine. Take a recess till about twenty after and I give you time to set everything up. Okay. A P.
Um, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, um, before you have the agenda for the budget work session, um, specifically as it relates to public safety projects. Um, we're going to, um, start out with, uh, talking about firing EMS departments, capital improvements requests. Um, next will be the sheriff, then E nine-one-one, and then, uh, we wanted to focus on the joint emergency communication system project, which will affect all three departments. Um, what we'd hope to get out of today's session is, um, just some ideas on, uh, the board's priorities and projects that you think are particularly important to be included in the budget, um, and, uh, just get a better read on, uh, what the board thinks are, are most important. The attachments that have been, um, included for your review, um, the first one is a summary of the CIP request by funding source. And I believe if you look on page seven of that document, at the bottom is the general fund transfer total, which, uh, for FY fifteen, which is what we're focusing on at this point, is, uh, four point one million dollars. Um, you've also got a, a summary of the CIP requests by department. And these have been, um, modified just a little bit, uh, based on what we know now as far as, um, some grants that have been recently re- uh, awarded. Um, that have pushed off the need for some of the projects, um, that were, um, in the original draft. I've also given you a printout, um, of the current appropriated and available CIP funding by project. Um, so you can see what is currently in our budget. Um, and then separately, with part of your agenda package, I believe you've gotten, um, a copy of the presentation on the radio system. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to John.
What I'd like to do is start off our, our vehicle requests. We've requested two medic units and one response vehicle. Allison has some, um, information for you. The first is gonna be, basically, it's the inventory of our fleet, the current mileage. Also, very important on certain units is the number of engine hours. As you're well aware, you've, um, approved for us to, um, purchase one medic unit immediately. That RFP closes on Thursday at two o'clock, so hopefully, within the next, um, several weeks to a month, we'll be able to order one. That being said, you're still looking at a six-month turnaround before we, um, the contract's signed and we probably take delivery of it. Again, we're asking for, for two units in addition to the one we have. The second handout is the, um, Munish report of the repairs that we've actually done this fiscal year, which is right around seventy-one thousand dollars. That, we've exceeded our budget, we've had to already transfer funds into that, um, that line item. But our, our number one priority is to be able to get some additional medic units, to get our fleet back up, um, to par along with the response vehicle. Again, if you look at several of our, um, Dodge Intrepids, those are sheriff's departments, uh, cars that we inherited that, you know, high hundred thousand miles, I think enough is said there. What I wanna do is have Chief Joyce come up and talk about three pieces of equipment, because as soon as we're done here, we're gonna get that equipment back on a unit. Um, three pieces that we're gonna talk about is our cardiac monitors, the auto pulse, and the ventilators that we use on our patients.
Well, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, here is what we're talking about as regards to cardiac monitor. This is the LifePak fifteen, and it's the, the latest production from the LifePak group. Uh, it succeeds the LifePak twelve, which you don't get in the car, was the standard of care. This machine actually has become the standard of care all over, I'm from Europe and everywhere. This is really just the standard machine that's been used. It allows you to do a bunch of things that you previously used on the machines to, and had an expenditure for that in the original machines and all that. This, as far as I remember, will do three particular gas monitors, it will do defibrillation, it can pace patients. It has some newer technologies that they found with, with problems. Using it in here, and everybody have no difficulty watching this, but the problem is, we don't do too much, we do a lot outdoors. So they've absolutely read on this screen to where you can see it in some ways, and you don't make errors. You can see it just as clearly as you can on here. Um, it, it really is to say, it's the standard of care, the ones we had before, it's really a moot point, because they're not gonna manufacture them. So eventually, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to use this machine. Um, and that's what we're asking for, and like I say, it really represents the top of the line, um, I.
What's, what's the difference between this and the twelve in terms of the additional functions?
It will do, for example, carbon monoxide monitoring, you, you had to, well, first of all, it'll do SPO two oxygen sensing. Yeah, technology that's been around a while, certainly, you would've, you could've used another machine for it's incorporated in this. But you would've had to apply an incredibly expensive, and don't hold me to this, but about three thousand dollars for the machine itself to do carbon monoxide monitoring. This is a feature of this.
So, so that, you, that's, that's the new gas, the carbon monoxide?
In this particular machine, that's a new added feature, not in previous machines.
Okay, alright.
And this is an ongoing CIP project that, um, was started by Jamie. Um, we're essentially about halfway through this project. If this project's funded, we'll continue to apply for grants, which again, will expedite this, uh, finishing out this project.
So what we're asking here really is, we want to continue the rollout of this machine. Obviously, the whole idea was to have all the machines and all the trucks that are available to these different people who live in different regions. Sound about it, but as a decision, wants to roll it out over here, so we've already come before you to talk about these.
Are you having problems getting parts for the, uh, LifePak twelves?
We haven't had to get parts, we have a fairly robust maintenance program that we have, and then even comes out and keeps them, so to a great degree, our machines stay pretty healthy. Um, if you were to get parts, you have to go looking for parts.
Okay, but, in other words, our maintenance, have, have they indicated when they're going to stop doing maintenance on the twelves?
The twelve's gonna be within the next several years, as far as the support for that, uh, platform.
The, the support for the twelve will disappear?
Yeah, it, it will, over a period of a few years, go away.
How many, how many does sixty-five thousand buy, we can't find it?
Two.
Buys two, two, okay.
Alright.
This is, this is one here that's sort of near and dear to my heart, cause this, this is one that, um, we did not have when I came here originally. This is the, the vent, and a lot, not many places use it, but it's one of the, the factors that allows us to have the success we have with post-resuscitation, resuscitation care. Um, you traditionally think TV movies, but you see people squeezing plastic bags. Wonderful for a few minutes, but if you're gonna go forty minutes down the road, it is detrimental to do this. There are a lot more things than getting air in people. Proper distribution of gas and the proper ratios, proper pressure, it's giving, proper pressures out. You cannot do that, no matter how skilled you are, for forty minutes and get the right result that you need. The machine doesn't make human errors. And this particular machine that we have is actually the Pinto model, I mean, it does the necessary things, but it's very predictable. You don't have to use it, for example, I could take this up a mountain somewhere and use it. Most machines are electric, all I need is a gas supply. And it'll work fine, as long as I have gas going through, it's basically a system. It helps to set it at a rate and a volume. But it gives you the opportunity to have absolutely predictable ventilation, which in the long term substantially affects survival. Not survival in life and death alone, but survival and function of how well your brain will actually, um, come back to its norm. So that this is a very important machine, and it, it, it forms a very important part of that whole system in resuscitation, I think we have. All of these machines in and of themselves are very important, but when put together, you get the real value, the cumulative value. And that's why we have the success rate we have, is cause we don't do isolated good pieces, we put a bunch of good stuff together to get the best result.
Do we need to replace the existing ones?
Yeah, these are right at about ten years old and it's, um, time to start replacing them.
What's the individual cost on this, we don't have?
Uh, eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
Now, with the replacement, you will, you will get other functions in this machine that at the time this was brought on to the market, they weren't there. So you're not gonna be replacing with a new version of the Pinto, you're gonna get a, a better version.
And what, what else do you get out of it?
Um, I haven't seen the spec for this one, but standardly, this gives you volume, how much you put in a person, and the amount of time. Um, there is an adaptation for the new one that allows you to run through, this, this is a promise. You can't even get this. Yeah, we have, when, when I talked earlier on about pressures, how gas going in and gas coming out, it's important. Positive and excretory pressure. It is very important not just that the gas goes into you, oxygen, whatever, at a certain optimal pressure. You don't want that to be completely released, so you have an, a positive end pressure, so it's the breathe in, breathe out, but not all the way out. That's the end pressure, you, you remain with some pressure within the lung, and that allows you to diffuse gas. And if you actually completely enter the lung. You keep all the small vessels, and I'm sure from, from school records, this is years and years ago, they always be compared to, like, the lungs of Albiola. You don't want them to collapse. You have to have them to open it, remain open, a very small amount, and that's where peak, the positive end excretory pressure comes in. Presently, we would have to buy a, a device that goes in between the circuit and the rhythm to, to get you. The new machine, as part of, of what's standard with it now, it will have another dial and I get to decide what peak is. Peak for you, me walking.
So I don't need to buy, buy those hundred dollar replace, uh, one-time, uh.
That I throw away after a, that was just the very one, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
A hundred bucks a peak and a popper, have it on your machine, lives there every day.
Okay.
What's the life expectancy on these units?
This particular unit here, I can tell you, we've had.
Try to tune, get, close the tune.
Yeah, we've, these are really robust units, um, I would think you should get, yeah, you, if you take care of them, you should get the ten out of these units.
And this is something that we do send off for service, you know, every year, there is a maintenance cost associated with it.
In order to use this, that there are certain laboratory requirements, that it has to be like any other instrument.
Calibrated.
That's right, calibrated, yeah.
It has to be calibrated, it has to be certified from a chemical. I think this is, um, part of it, you know, we talked of this being, hoping it, the whole system begins to be survival. Again, this is new, become a new machine, we've come to the board before and talked about it. This is the auto pulse, and as I said earlier on, with that manual bagging of patients. Um, human CPR is a wonderful thing, but me doing CPR, including when you study this, I'm gonna, you're gonna get two or three, maybe four minutes out of me. You won't see it and I won't notice it, but the quality and the result I get will have deteriorated substantially. Everybody says, oh, you know, you put patients in ambulances and you see it on TV all the time, CPR is being performed down the road. That's just not possible to get to effect, yet it's done all the time, you see it, you'll see it around the place. You cannot do effective CPR while you're on the move, nor can you do effective CPR when you're going up the stairs. And everybody lives on the top floor and doesn't have an elevator, always that. This machine, you can, because the patient is anchored to the machine. You can actually take you or me and move us up the stairs here out to the parking lot, and the machine will perform efficient CPR. This machine only perform, it's an all or nothing machine. It will lead a function and perform exactly as the specifications are, and, or it will warn you when it stops functioning. So it won't do an inadequate job, nev- it just is an all or nothing machine. Um, there are several other types, we chose this for, for many different reasons. This is a much, first of all, I believe it's a much more effective machine, but it's a less traumatic machine. The old, the old theory of compression, where you're compressing a hand to a chest, the chest, the heart, and then you round the heart back in your spine, which in itself is, is not the best thing in the world.
So you don't re- recommend the thumper anymore?
I, 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 now you're shut, you, hmm, I saw that, we all used actually the other day, it shows.
Okay.
But, um, this does, is inter thoracic pressure. So what it doesn't have anything anymore to where there's direct pressure on our, it doesn't squeeze your heart directly. What it does is it changes the thoracic pressure, like a bellows. And that's how, because of this wide band, there's no pinpoint, if you looked at the old pumpers and the stuff you had seen on TV, they were basically pistols. And all that pressure was pulling on the heart, that in itself is not good for you. Also, when you change the thoracic pressure, you produce better CPR, that's proven, that's documented, here with you, that's, that's there. So again, if something was come to you before and it's part of a replacement program, um, that, that we, we need to continue. And part of that amalgam of things that we do that gives us the success.
And how many are you getting for these, sixteen thousand?
Sixteen thousand apiece.
Okay. So how many do you want?
One a year, what we wanna start doing is to ensure that every unit has, um, an auto pulse on it, but also start a replacement cycle. Um, as a lot of the equipment we have, we've, we've accumulated it because of the department's growing so fast, but we don't have a plan to sustain that current level of service, so what we wanna start doing is again, get every unit up to speed with these auto pulses and then start some sort of a replacement cycle. All three pieces of equipment that Chief Joyce showed you tonight are, um, eligible for the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund grant. We were just successful in receiving a grant for the LifePaks and an auto pulse, uh, that we're gonna receive some funding to help this year's capital purchases. And we would anticipate applying for those, um, same grants next year.
What do those fifty percent match?
Uh, we got eighty-twenty on the LifePaks, and I believe it's a fifty-fifty on the auto pulse, um, although the fifty-fifty math doesn't work out to eight Gs, um, just because what they do is they look at different medical devices and they average that out. The auto pulse is a little bit more expensive than some of the other units, but is by far, in, in our opinion, a, a more superior product.
So would that be more like a sixty-forty?
Yeah, we, we, uh, received right around forty-five hundred dollars for the auto pulse to, for the assistance this year, and on the, um, um, LifePaks, we received right around forty-three thousand, I, I don't remember the exact numbers, but that's close enough for the time being.
One bid is a housekeeping, when we bring this forward, we'll use a unit cost, and how many u- numbers? One bid is a housekeeping, when we bring this forward, we'll use a unit cost, and how many u- numbers, so that you can, you don't have to kinda do the math. We'll, we'll have it itemized that way when we bring it forward.
One of the things I, I forgot by mistake to mention is, not alone do we need to continue in a, in a replacement pattern going through time, we don't have spares. So when we got these, we had enough to do the purpose. So on a given day, any machine can have a, can have something go wrong with it. I can't go out and say, put me out of spare and put it in the Barbersville truck. If it breaks and I have to send it away, if you're living in Barbersville, you're not gonna get this technology. But if you're living down in Monroe, today, you will get that technology, you're gonna be excluded because I don't have a spare.
So how many do you have in the stock now?
One on each of our trucks, we have.
Uh, f- uh, five, I believe, it's, it's five.
Six or four? You got five? Yeah, this is five.
Yeah, five, we're getting ready to purchase one additional, um, like I say, through this year, CIP, again, supported by the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund grant. But a- again, you need, you want them on every first out ambulance, so again, medic twenty-three goes out, if somebody jumps in two forty, you still have the same technology. Not to mention, like Chief Joyce says, if we have to send one out for repair or maintenance, again, i- as any machine, it requires maintenance, but, um. Again, all three of these are life-saving pieces of equipment, and allows us to have these positive outcomes like we do in the county.
From my perspective, from the clinical perspective, these are absolute requirements. They're, they're, they're absolute necessities.
Where, where is maintenance done? Where is the maintenance done?
It depends on what you have wrong with it, if for, you wanna call maintenance a battery has a problem, we can very easily send that battery off. But the company that have it, they're based on the left and the right coast, up in Massachusetts, and one of the factories down near San Diego. If we have a motherboard problem with this, I have to send it to San Diego to have it fixed. Because they're the only places presently that are capable of doing the, the, the innards of this machine, so to speak, the motherboard, the technology, the stuff. But if we're, if we're dealing with lesser things, we can send it up to Chelmsford, I believe, it is Chelmsford Pass, is where they do it. So it depends, I can't tell you, we send everything to this particular replacement unit, because it depends on the, the particular problem that comes with the board, which of that factory.
Uh, they do not, uh, give lo- local certification, so someone in the department could not be certified to do the repairs as they should.
That's why they do not.
Okay.
What, what's the turnaround time?
The turnaround time I've had ever, anything from get it out there in forty-eight hours, and then turn it around in forty-eight hours, to ten days to two weeks. So i- it really is important. You may be able to get away with rolling the dice and saying, I won't have it in a given area for forty-eight hours. But if I have some serious problem with it, I'm not gonna have it in your area for a couple of weeks. And looking at the, the way the calls go, you're going to have somebody who requires this particular equipment and that particular therapy in that period, somebody's gonna lose out. It's very necessary to have that.
Next piece of, uh, equipment, thank you, Chief Joyce. Uh, next piece I wanna go over on the capital improvement is the four gas monitors. This is something that the county provides to the volunteer fire department, not to mention our department, um, also has two monitors. This is a piece of equipment that we use on a fairly routine business to make life safety decisions. We get a CO alarm in somebody's residence, this is how we measure, is there any CO in the air? On the fire ground, we measure carbon monoxide, the newer ones that we will buy, actually will measure, measure hydrogen cyanide. We have any sort of a confined space or an incident in a dairy, the hydrogen sulfide, um, that measures, measures oxygen. But again, this is a life safety piece of equipment that the fire department uses on a, on a fairly routine basis. Um, we're asking for sixty thousand, and that would buy, write at about eight monitors. This is a project that we could actually split up over a period of, um, two years, and, um, be able to at least provide half the department's monitors, and then go on to the following year. We had a little bit of discussion earlier, um, when the budget was first starting, as far as the fire station generators. Uh, in my opinion, this is something that we should remove from the CIP, there does not seem to be a whole lot of su- support. Not to mention the, um, who's gonna maintain it, who owns it, 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 it's just muddies the waters there, in my opinion, again, I, I say we remove that. We've gone over our ambulances, the autopulses, and the monitors.
One quick question for you, on the ambulances themselves, are these units, well, first question, the current ambulances, are they able to be re-chassis and be functionable? And second, are the new ambulances going to be able to be re-chassis?
Our current, um, ambulances, I would say no, that, that chassis, or the box would not be something that we would be considering remounting. The new ones that we're purchasing, we do plan on remounting those, hopefully twice. Um, depending on the level of re- rehab they have to do on the unit, you're gonna see between a twenty-five and forty percent savings on the, um, on the remount. Obviously, I think on the first remount, you're gonna see a greater savings than that second remount. But you're paying, um, a little bit more money upfront, but getting a quality box, a quality electrical system, and our intention is, again, to, to remount those. And, um, hopefully see a cost savings as, as we move forward. The Fire Apparatus Reserve Fund for the, um, for the volunteer fire, um, providers. Yeah, we're asking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that, and what that does is if we put in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, a year, about every three to four years, we'll be able to, to purchase, um, or assist with the purchasing of apparatus for the volunteer fire companies. That being said, we need to be making some decisions if we decide to do that. Who's gonna own that piece of equipment, who's gonna maintain that piece of equipment? Um, so there's some things that we need to work out, but in the meantime, we can begin to start funding that, whether, again, you can fund the entire amount or at least a partial amount as we move forward and develop these MOUs with the volunteer fire and, um, EMS companies.
John, on the four gas monitors, you, you said sixty, piece bigger we have says thirty-five, is there?
There, there was a, um, mistake there in the, the spreadsheet, it didn't calculate that out, um, correctly.
But it shouldn't be sixty, right?
It should be a sixty. Um, the gator, I'm not, I realize this is, this is something that we need for events, but I realize with the, um, current state of the CIP, I'm just gonna skip over that for time's sake, and sound good? I'm not, I'm not getting any, uh, and then the la- well, let's see, we have a portable laptop. Computers, we actually just applied for a one hundred percent grant, so we're gonna hold off on that CIP project, we feel fairly confident on that. And then the pulse oximetry, um, we're gonna hold off on that project, we can probably start funding those, um, through a different means and, and replaced over, over a period of a couple of years. I believe that's gonna cover all our CIP projects for this year, there's several that are a couple of years out, if you'd like, I'd go over those, or, um, we can move on to the other departments.
Is breathing apparatus one of those?
Breathing apparatus, we actually, if I'm not mistaken, let me, uh, come back to that, that's. What page is that, Ken?
Oh, I was, I think it's in fiscal sixteen.
Here, it's, it's in fiscal year sixteen. Um, our current breathing apparatus, it, it's, they go out of warranty this year, there are also two NFPA standards out, they're getting close to ten years old. Why bring that up is, next year, if we go to purchase breathing apparatus, we would be putting in for an assistance to, um, firefighters grant. It's a ninety-ten grant, ninety percent the feds would pay, ten percent we would pay. Being two NFPA standards out, close to ten years old, because we have multiple volunteer fire departments, we'd all, they would also be considered a regional grant. So three of the biggest criteria that that grant is graded upon, we would more than likely meet. Um, and our intention would be that, uh, when we address this breathing apparatus, it's, you know, hopefully gonna be grant funded.
John, as, as I look at your totals, uh, we got about a million in two thousand fifteen, two in two thousand sixteen, two and a half in, uh, two thousand seventeen, and then we're down to a half a million and a quarter million. And I'm looking at a lot of the things that are, that are, you know, stacked up on top of each other. Uh, the laptops, the first couple of years here, the, uh, uh, the autopulse replacements, the cardiac's, uh. Is there any way that we can think about stretching any of these out to, instead of seeing a big spike here? See something to, I, I recognize that we're behind on a lot of this, and, and maybe, maybe we need to, to upfront load a lot of this, but it would seem, we wanna be able to try to find a way to level this funding out a little bit more.
On, on the cardiac monitors, once, once that, uh, project is complete, it's gonna go away for a good five, six, seven, eight years. Um, on the autopulses, that's what we're, we're trying to do, is, you know, buy one a year. Um, on the laptops, again, the, you know, those are reaching the end of their life cycle, um, we put in for them, but also realize that that's something that is grant funded. Once they're replaced, I mean, you're gonna get another five or six years, something that's not gonna show up in your five-year CIP forecast. Um, one of the things that I've attempted to do, and I'm gonna use the example of like the autopulses and the, the ventilators, those were things that the department never looked at before. That we're, we're trying to, um, incorporate into the system. The reason the ventilators is, is one, um, project where we try to replace them all at once. They are right at ten years old, but the other thing is, because of the technical nature of that piece of equipment, we wanna have a standard piece of equipment so that everybody's using and is trained on that one piece of equipment, because it's very, very technical, and you screw, screw up there, it's somebody's life.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that particular one. I'm looking here, uh, you're looking at about a quarter million per ambulance?
Yes.
So I'm looking at, uh, one in the previous years, two in the next three years, and then one in the, in eighteen. What kind of an inventory of ambulances are you looking at here?
We're looking, what we're trying to plan for is the complete replacement of our fleet, which is a, which is six ambulances.
Is that six or eight?
It's, we have six, but what you also have to consider is, we have the, you know, right now, we're dependent on Lake of the Woods and Orange Rescue to supply three additional units. So at least for planning purposes, I think we need to be planning for additional ambulances.
So you're looking at a, at an, at an inventory of basically eight ambulances then?
Qu- and anticipating some growth with our system, because it's very shortly, we're gonna need to be having five units on the street. Um, again, when you look at Orange Volunteer, um, Rescue Squad, we've been using their, um, unit for heavily the last week or so, and that's, you know, it's an older unit that's gonna need to be replaced. Currently, they are not in the position to be able to purchase a, an additional ambulance. Um, the volunteers, as you well know, whether it be at the lake or Orange, um, Rescue, when it comes time to staff a unit, they have to have something to ride on, and we're trying to anticipate.
Okay, so you're, you're looking, you're looking to eventually have a, an inventory of eight?
Quite possibly, and again, I think we need to plan for that, and a- and again, if we can cut back on that in the, in the future, um, that'd be great. But until Orange Rescue is in a position to purchase a new unit.
I don't think you're gonna ever see, I, I don't want that.
Um, you know, I think we, I think for planning purposes, we would be, um, remiss if we didn't a- address that. Cause we can always, I, I'd rather ask for this upfront and be planning for this a couple of years out and be able to reduce it, than all of a sudden hit you with a, a big surprise, you know? Three, four years out.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, one of the things that Mr. Fram said about the equipment and, 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 and the high spike, I think, at least from my initial meetings with, with public safety, you know, there, there are some needs, absolutely, I think we're hearing that. But maybe as for the fire apparatus, kind of a fund that you replenish each year with a certain amount, might, you know, I might wanna look at setting up at least a equipment replacement fund of a similar kind, where in the CIP annually, you're putting in some, some funds so that you're, you're smooth, you're trying to smooth it out, and, and, and anticipate in the future, and then certainly you all would approve, you know, disbursements from that, the acquisition of equipment. So that might be another, another thing, a way of trying to smooth this out in future years.
Well, I'm just saying, uh, you know, I'm looking at a million, uh, this, this coming year. Uh, and, uh, that's, that's gonna be tough, uh, but two, two and a half.
And I know she didn't put the, um, Barbersville Fire Department's fire truck request in here either.
No, no. We've, um, are starting to do that, um, the replacement fund, plus I think what we're doing is, you know, the study, they're actually coming in town this evening. They're gonna be interviewing the different departments over the next day or so, we're waiting to see what, what they have to say.
I, part of this is, uh, does every fire department get every ambulance they want, or every vehicle they want? Or do we look at what, what's needed off across the county in terms of, uh, of how we fund it? You know, I mean, it's, it would be nice for each fire department to have what they want, but I'm not sure that the county should be spending that kind of money if we don't need that many, so.
And as far as the Barbersville, um, they made that request separate from us, I, I, again, I didn't include it in our CIP.
I am, I, you know, I, I, I hear ya, and, and I, I'm just, I hear ya, I'm just gonna play kinda like devil's advocate on that. It's kinda like that equipment that, that we were just shown, there are obviously some areas that use it more than others, but that doesn't mean that just because you maybe live in an area where you are, um, less likely to have as many calls, therefore, you, you know, because there are, um, areas of the county that are more rural than others, and they all still pay the same amount of taxes as everybody else and expect the same amount of, um.
And, and that, and I don't have a problem with that, that's why I say, is, but can you achieve the level of service, uh, across the county, rather than five separate, uh, uh, focal points? Uh, in other words, uh, if I don't, I mean, I've got like two la- two ladder trucks in the county, one at, uh, one in Orange and one at Orange, you know, and so when we start looking, yeah, not all five fires, uh, fire departments have a ladder truck, so.
Well, true.
When we look at this, we've gotta make sure that we've got adequate service everywhere, but that doesn't necessarily mean that every, every fire department gets everything they want. And that's, that's why we, why we've asked for the study, to determine what it is we need, and that's how we should be focusing our funding. And then the individual fire departments buy their own if they, if they can come up with the money.
Any more questions for me, and then, uh?
Nope.
Not now, I think you're gonna give a million dollars off your.
Not yet.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mike.
Um.
Volunteer boards.
This, this is a little unusual, so I get to dictate the pace, huh? Uh, this'll be interesting. Um, alright, so, uh, looking at the, uh, the list of the sheriff's office CIP, I guess I'll just go in order. Um, we don't have that, that large of a list. Uh, the, the first one on the list for us is courthouse security improvements, uh, I believe we put this in.
Page eight of nine.
Okay, thank you. God, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's okay, make sure everybody gets to the same spot. Um, we put this in last year, um, not cause we thought we'd get funded for it last year, but to bring it to your attention that it's a, a place of need for us. Uh, the courthouse has been built, it's been in place for some time now, uh, over time, and as things occur in the real world around us, uh, there are some issues with the courthouse that we believe we need to address, uh, from a security standpoint. Um, if, if you've been through the courthouse, you will know that, uh, there are a number of exterior doors, uh, that allow access to the courthouse. Uh, we tried to lock all of them down except the front ones, so that we follow all the public through the, through the front doors, uh, so that they have to go through a metal detector. Uh, the issue that this, uh, particular improvement addresses is the fact that as you enter that initial door, uh, there is no protection for the deputy who's sitting behind the table. Uh, if you take out that deputy behind the table on your way in, uh, then, uh, basically you're allowed to move throughout the building, uh, except where our cameras can pick you up and spot you. Uh, that particular person would not have to be fearful of any reprisal from us until bail is certified, and, uh, that notification could take some time, if they're not allowed to hit the emergency button initially. Uh, so this particular, uh, improvement would put a secure space. Uh, so this particular, uh, improvement would put a secure space right there at the metal detector. Uh, that would allow, uh, if a gunman came into the courthouse, that would allow, uh, a bailiff, uh, who is there stationed, uh, to hit the emergency button to notify people in the building that there is a problem. It also gives them a secure base with which they can essentially assail whoever it is that's trying to get into the courthouse, thus preventing that person from just walking, taking out the deputy, walking into clerk's office and start killing people without, uh, uh, without any fear of reprisal, at least initially.
With, with this project, I, I'm trying to envision what you were doing there, it, would it also control the access of that, of a person? Or wouldn't affect the access, this would be primarily just for the deputy?
It, well, the, the person that would be working the magnetometer, uh, which is the, the metal detector at the front door, uh, would actually be using this to operate the magnetometer as well. So there would be drawers in it where people would take their possessions, uh, put them inside the drawers, the deputy pulls them in. Uh, as he pulls them in to inspect them, the person, once he gives them the word, passes through the magnetometer. You can see, uh, if there's any metal on the person at that point in time. The deputy then returns the items to, to the person once they clear it. So if somebody was to just go through the magnetometer, that deputy would have an access point to be able to hit the emergency button and exit the access point in order to be able to try to stop that person from going farther.
But you're not buzzing them in and out, is it, it's not a lock?
No, no, sir.
Okay, that's...
There's not a hard stop that you would prevent them from entering?
No. If, if there would have been, it should have been put in when they designed the building. Um, so we're, we're trying to work with, um, I mean, in, in my view, uh, some security deficiencies that should have been addressed when the building was, was built.
Yeah, well, I, I was over there a couple of weeks ago and happened to have a conversation with the deputy who was there, and he and I sort of came to that same conclusion, that really what you need is something outside the door rather than inside the door i- in order to have a true stop. I don't know that that's practical, but, uh, clearly, it, it, as it is now, someone could run through and keep on going, until and unless the deputy or someone stepped in.
Sure, yeah, the, I mean, it, it would be altogether possible to put a stop at the other end of the magnetometer. Uh, so once they clear the belongings that, that are on the person, uh, the person passes through the magnetometer, they could then buzz a door, so you could, you could build in that stop there. This does not do that, however, this just allows us to warn, to warn the building and keep the deputy safe in order to be able to try and stop that person from going any farther in the building. And as, as it is, uh, with, with this particular enclosure, as it's been planned, uh, we're looking at bulletproof glass, at least on the top, but we're looking at hardening it a different way down below to try and save some money there on the, on the outset of it. Uh, this quote is a year old, I didn't go get another quote this year, uh, but it's, it should be similar, I think, um, one way or the other. If there aren't any questions about that, then the second one is gonna be the parking lot repair. I know several of you, at least, uh, I know have been to our office, uh, dodging the potholes on your way in. The, the parking lot that's in place now has been there since the building was built in ninety, there's been some repair done to it. Uh, but the parking lot is falling apart at this point in time. Uh, there are some areas in it that are quite bad, uh, that we would, that we need, uh, some type of, uh, repair done for.
Exactly.
So I, I think the reason, and I'm, I, you know, I, I've been doing the budget now for the sheriff's office for two years, this is my second year doing it, uh, I know this project's been on the table longer than that, uh, it was there... It's existed a long time. I think it's been, been put off, uh, because of the discussions that have occurred about what you're gonna do with the nine-one dispatch center, um, and, uh, radio systems, et cetera. So I think that's why it's been put off from time to time. I, I would, depending on what, what you all are discussing or decide to discuss about that in the future, I would at least ask for enough money for us to be able to fix the, the blatant problems with the parking lot now, so, uh, uh, we can, uh, try and keep it in one piece at lea- at least for now, which would cost significantly less than twenty-three thousand, but I have no idea what, what it would be for somebody to come in and stick some asphalt in the holes for us.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, so perhaps there's a way of maybe coming up with some numbers for what I would characterize as spot improvements, just to keep the spidering and freezing thaw stuff and going in and out? Maybe that's a number we can come up with.
Yeah, we...
I'd try to look at that road to the animal shelter, maybe we can get some savings by trying to do a little on both.
I think you read one of those. Or combine the projects and get a savings that way.
That's what you just said, in another way.
Yeah. We could take a look at that, through.
Well, I mean, the projects in, in total, rather than, uh, Marshall.
Yes, sir, we would see what would be due to combine the two and get the cost of savings because of mobilizing once in one contract.
How many vehicles is two ninety-seven?
I believe it's nine.
Nine, I think, yeah.
That's what I thought.
They're showing eight on this other sheet, and three were funded FY fourteen.
Yes, sir, we, we got, well, we got two, we were funded two through CIP this year. The third one we received, we got from savings from last year's budget.
Okay.
Uh, that, that we acquired, so that replaced three, uh, of our fleet. I've asked for nine, uh, and the CIP covers...
I think that's my typo.
Okay.
The, the, the CIP on the vehicle replacement covers, um, the, not only the, the vehicle, but the, uh, installation, the de-install and the installation of emergency equipment, uh, that carries over from one vehicle to another. Uh, that, that's, that's, as you can see, that is our largest CIP. And, uh, I mean, quite, quite frankly, it's gonna be a, a rather hard-hitting one. Um, just going through the numbers, I think if you look at my budget projections for what I've actually written in the budgets for the coming year, uh, it costs more for us to maintain a car over a hundred thousand miles than it does a car that's under a hundred thousand miles. I believe it's eight hun- right around eight hundred dollars per car, uh, per year. Right now, after the three that we just replaced, uh, I'm projecting that we're gonna have, starting in July, uh, we're gonna have ten cars that have over a hundred fifty thousand miles. Uh, we're gonna have seven that have between a hundred twenty-five and a hundred fifty. We're gonna have six between a hundred and a hundred twenty-five. And we'll have four more that'll hit a hundred thousand miles partway through. Uh, many of those are patrol vehicles, um, and court security vehicles. We try to, uh, put the SROs, the school resource officers, in, uh, vehicles that we pass down, uh, as time goes on. Uh, there's less driving in those positions than, than there are in the other ones, although, uh, our school resource officers also doubles transportation officers, uh, for us to move, uh, mental patients and whatnot from state to state, or prisoners, or from place to place. Uh, both of our animal control vehicles, one of them has almost two hundred thousand, uh, the other one has ninety-five thousand. So, um, the, the vehicles that we're asking for, we're not replacing spare vehicles, we're actually replace, trying to replace the working vehicles that are out on the street right now.
Yeah, are we to believe what the newspaper says, that you actually got funding from the state for two vehicles? And are they included in this or not included, due to the governor giving the law enforcement community thirty-three million dollars? I actually read a news article that said that you all were going to be able to purchase two vehicles as well as a laptop or something. Okay, well, that's, well, I just wanted to make sure so that...
Was it on the internet? Because if it's on the internet, it, it isn't the truth.
No, but thi- this was a news article, and I wanna make sure that it was purely just a news article. Okay, but that, uh, in fact, I believe it was on one of the Charlottesville TV stations as well, so...
I, I read, I read an article in NBC twenty-nine, uh, that talked about the governor's initiative.
Right.
Uh, but I don't think that it, I don't think that it provided, um, per department or per agency. Uh, it was a pot, and I did not see anything in which they said that it was gonna be distributed.
So if any residents come to us, there, at this point, there is no truth to that.
Not, not that we've heard, and, and I will remind the board...
Specifically said "are"?
Yes, yes, that, that's why I asked, because, um...
Well, I, I will remind the board, we did have an SRO, uh, grant funding position that was provided for the state before for elementary schools across the state that was only gonna fund thirty-two positions.
Right.
Uh, with more than two thousand elementary schools in the state, so, uh, some, sometimes they, they, they talk big from the...
I, I just wanted to make sure that no one came to us with this news article information and we got blindsided.
Yeah, no, no, sir.
Jim, uh, Jonathan Swisper did my ear of the town, apparently got two cars in that.
Okay, okay, so...
Was that the governor or the attorney general? Cause there's, there's a new initiative now.
It was a thirty-three million dollar surplus or something that they gave out, so...
There was a settlement with, with Pfizer Pharmaceuticals, that the attorney general was dispersing funds from.
Okay, so, uh, okay, well, that, that's fine, they, the one article I saw then incorrectly quoted it as Orange County, when it should have been the town of Orange.
The state...
That, that way, we just don't get any backlash from...
Yes, sir, but, but I do know the governor announced something, the new governor...
Right.
Did announce something, so that, that's yet to be seen what that's gonna morph into, I think. Uh, but I think there may be some funding from the governor's office potentially.
Okay.
Any more questions about the vehicles?
Your, your estimates going forward in sixteen, seventeen, and, and beyond, you're, you're showing a hundred ninety-eight straight. Are you planning on juggling the, uh, cruiser, uh, replacements uh, in such a way that you can cover when the, whatever the other ones are, the animal control truck and, and the other things in that number? Or is that, when those pop up for replacement, are they gonna be in addition to that?
We're, no, sir, we're gonna replace the fleet as they are. So the one ninety-eight essentially is six cars a year. It's a, across the board, we plan every year that we're gonna need to replace six vehicles, uh, every year.
So the new ones go out on patrol and the others get relegated to the less intensive use?
We'll ta- yep, we'll take, uh, we'll take the cars that we're having problems with, uh, the, the oldest that we're having the most problems with. Uh, we'll deadline those vehicles, uh, give them back to the county for auction or whatever y'all do with them, uh, once we take all the strapping off of them. And then, uh, we'll rotate the vehicles to, uh, it's patrol and court security essentially is where we're putting them for the transports, cause they put the most miles. And then we'll take their older vehicles and roll them back to the other positions that, uh, as, as they come up.
I think, Mr. White, if I understood your question, is that, that one ninety-eight will take care of frontline cruisers, but also say the animal control truck or any of these other non, non, uh, crew, non, uh, deputy vehicles that one ninety-eight's gonna take? You just figure out...
They're all deputy vehicles, animal control officers are deputies.
Understand.
So this is vehicles across, vehicles across the board.
That was my, that was really my question. But the animal control officer's not getting the brand-new vehicle?
Well, they have trucks.
Yeah, they have trucks.
Oh, yeah, trucks, sorry.
Yeah, they have trucks.
Different vehicle types, it's not just a cruiser that one ninety...
This is accro- across the board, no matter what vehicle it is, this, this will replace whatever vehicle is...
You make that judgment based on where the fleet is at that point.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, as far as the patrol laptop replacement, uh, that program currently, we have, uh, fifteen road units that have patrol laptops. Uh, they use those laptops currently, uh, as the system is designed, to go to people's homes and take reports, type the reports into computers, which are then electronically, uh, transmitted at one of the hotspots in the county that we have set up, uh, back to the, uh, sheriff's office where they can be approved by, uh, supervisors. Um, that is an effort to keep deputies in vehicles and not in the office. Uh, when patrol vehicles are in, parked at the office, they're not actually being seen by the criminal element uh, in areas where they need to be seen, thus preventing crimes that don't occur. And there's no way to give you statistics on that, cause they don't occur, so we, we can't really say how many it is, uh, that, that we prevent. But that's the idea behind it. Uh, these laptops are also used, uh, to help with the DMV initiative, uh, that they originally put in, in which you can complete your traffic crash, uh, reports on the street while you're waiting on the record to get there. Uh, you go to the hotspot and transmit it, and you're not going back to the office and having to redo all your, all your, uh, crash data. So, uh, the, these computers are used for a number of things, but they're designed specifically to keep patrol deputies in their cars on the street. Um, we funded these a number of years ago by grant, uh, but we had no replacement set up for them. Uh, so as these laptops came up for replacement, uh, we didn't have money set up for them to be, apart from pulling them out of our regular police supplies lines. Um, last year, uh, I was able to obtain a grant that replaced all fifteen of our laptop computers, that had costed twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we're in the process now of purchasing those computers, uh, so that we can put them forward. They will hit their warranties at fi- at the end of five years, which is the standard replace a, a laptop computer point. Um, so I asked to have it pulled off of the next couple of years, uh, so that we could get the savings off of the grant that we've actually gotten, but I've asked it to be re-instituted, uh, thereafter, so that we can continue our replacement procedures, uh, so we can keep our computers within warranties, uh, so we don't have men, uh, like you were hearing earlier, we do not have, uh, spare computers right now either. So when a deputy's computer goes down, he loses it, and he either bor- borrows somebody else's, or he has to return the office through the reports. Uh, so this replacement system as we go, as we implement this new one, we're gonna keep some of the old ones that are out of warranty. Uh, we'll rework them, we'll have to take Windows, uh, and upgrade it to Windows Seven, since the old Windows isn't gonna be, um, it's not gonna be, uh, taken care of. Microsoft isn't loo- yeah, they're not supporting it anymore, thank you. And, um, so we'll take those, we'll upgrade those a little bit, keep them in reserve, and then as we replace, we would do the same thing. So we'll always keep some back. Uh, the rest of them, we're gonna give to the county, cause I know that, uh, Larry could have some use for some of those computers, I think, for some of the things that he's trying to do, so... Uh, but I, I have asked to, to have that lifted for a couple of years, since we've got this influx of new computers. Um, and the server is a similar, a similar issue. Uh, the server was just replaced, uh, last year, so, uh, we're not due for a replacement on that until two thousand and eighteen at this point.
Okay. Alrighty. Well, we were doing this until six, six fifteen, so I guess we go ahead and break for dinner and close, and, um, come back, come back for a public hearing and start to work on it over again.
All right, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. One matter concerning the discussion of personnel, which concerns a specific employee. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of a public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. And discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of existing business or industry, where a previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. And whereas pursuant to sections two point two, thirty seven, A one, A five, and A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County is hereby authorized to discuss any of the four said matters in closed meeting.
So moved.
Seconded. Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye. And I opened it up and I could stick, it's like I was getting another email, and I was like, I could still hear it, but I ding, but I couldn't get back to it.
All right, sir, if you would read the wonderful statement.
Oh, yes, Kelly, sorry, I'm talking computer. To the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion, at which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Need a roll call.
Mr. Preacher?
Yes.
Mr. Frey?
Aye.
Mrs. Beth?
Uh.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye. Okay, uh, at this point in time, we have a public hearing scheduled for a proposed budget amendment and supplemental appropriations. Anybody speaking to that, or...
I can give you a summary.
Please.
Um, this budget amendment, um, we needed to have a public hearing, uh, just due to the amount. Um, but this is in relation to the new, um, self-funded medical insurance that the county's put in place, and, um, this will establish an internal service fund, which is basically... And, um, this will establish an internal service fund, which is basically, um, serves the other, uh, county funds, such as the general fund, the school fund, the social services fund. Um, this amount is for the total for all three entities, both employee contributions and county contributions. And doesn't represent any new money being appropriated, because it's all been appropriated within those different funds. But this is just a, a way to centralize the accounting for it, where then the bill can be paid.
Okay. Open the public hearing. Close public hearing. Discussion, or I'll entertain a motion. I will make, uh, a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, budget amendment and supplemental appropriation. Second. Have a motion as second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Give me five zero. Three minutes for a public hearing, that's good.
Was it even that?
Maybe. No, cause we didn't really start till one after, so two minutes. Okay, uh, are we going to finish the rest of this agenda first, or continue on here? Let's continue, I think we oughta continue with the. They're, they're here, so, yeah. Okay, alright, well with that, then we'll go back, Linda.
And, um, next, we have the E nine-one-one capital improvements request, and Nikki's gonna talk about those, and then, um, transition into, uh, the joint emergency communication system project.
Um, for nine-one-one for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, our requests are actually small. Um, we're asking for seventeen thousand dollars to replace the PCs, uh, the actual computers and the server for the radio, uh, consoles, uh, since they have reached end of life. The other items that we have on there kind of tie into when we talk, when we, um, present our, about our radio system overview and where we see us going in the future with that. A lot of the decisions that we have to predict our five-year forecast tie into what direction or what guidance we're given from the board. And as we bring up the public safety radio system, we'll delve more into that. We do know that the immediate need for us is the seventeen thousand dollars to replace PCs, though they are end of life, and it is the cost of doing business. Um, a lot of our computer equipment is on a five-year recycle, um, and it gets, uh, grouped in with the IT projects also. IT does recognize that it is public safety and does make it a, a high-level priority to make sure that that is included. So we have come up with a long-term funding strategy to, in five years' time, I can tell you this needs to be replaced, in ten years' time, I can sit back and tell you, um, that this needs to be replaced. Um, we have budgeted for, um, monies for portable radios and r- pages to replace them, again, they have, they do reach end-of-life cycles, they, a radio typically lasts about five years, batteries need to be replaced every three years, batteries get abs- um, absorbed into the cost of our operations. And since coming to Orange County, have now actually put line items and a funding mechanism in place in our operational budget to take care of batteries. But again, these are best guesstimates, because we don't know the direction of the communication system, and what types of radios we may migrate to, are we staying on web? Um, so at this point, I would actually, before I can go much further with my budget, even the generate, asking for a generator, we don't know what size generator to buy, because we don't know where we're going with the radio system, and we don't know where we're going with the building, nine-one-one building relocation project. Um, so, we don't want to go out and spend money on a generator today, and in five years' time, we say, hey, let's put radio system X in place, but by the way, your generator's not big enough, we don't think that's the best way to financially plan, uh, for the future in the county and for the equipment that we need. So at this point, um, unless there's any further questions on our immediate needs of CIP, I'd like to switch over to present the, uh, radio system overview.
Okay.
Okay. Can you switch me over, I have some. And this presentation is being made on behalf of, uh, Fire and Rescue Podcast and, uh, Sheriff's Office. We have worked, um, together to come up with this presentation, and there should be a copy of the slide you presented.
Survey happened, it's all it's like on.
Uh, yeah. I found it. It wa- it was a hand, it was a. I know, no, I know we got it, I just, uh, not sure where I put it.
Here it is.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Alright.
So as we know, and, um, this is not a new project to Orange County. We have some existent, existing radio system limitations. The original system that we have in place today has been operating since nineteen ninety-one. And what we're finding, and what has been found in the past studies, such as the video study that was conducted in two thousand and seven, that it does not re- provide reliable handheld radio operation for public safety. I wanna point out that we're talking about han- handheld portable radios. And as we use the analogy, when a firefighter gets trapped in a building, he's not inside, outside the building, he needs that handheld, or such as an officer who's on a traffic stop, they don't have that mobile radio next to them. So again, we're reaching these points that I've already, um, talked to you how much of call volume has increased, so the demand on the radio system has also increased. We're seeing a lack of ade- adequate coverage and capacity countywide, especially in our growth areas. The Route thirty-three and twenty corridor in the Bobbysville area has always been a troublesome spot, um, it's nothing new. We know that in that area, um, coverage is about sixty-five percent reliable. We know in the Lake of the Woods area, that is the number-one area that is plaguing us today, and how do we fix the communications up in that area? There's areas up, up there, such as in front of True Value, with every zero coverage. You go inside and you're the light commercial structures that are up there, there is zero coverage. So again, as we place more demands, we bring more population, we need to use this radio wall. Again, the coverage that we're looking for and expecting out of the radio system is not there. It's not resilient, there's multiple systems and there's no redundancy. The sheriff's office and the nine-one-one center and Fire and Rescue use two different systems. If one system goes down, there is no real true backup. Um, if we lose the Clark Mountain Tower, the sheriff's office and, and fire and rescue are sitting ducks, there's really no way to talk to each other. Fortunately, the tower in Bobbysville can't communicate in the Lake of the Woods district and vice versa. We don't have any way on knowing if we're on generated power, we don't know what our fuel levels are at our radio sites. Um, though we've come up with ways to problem-solve this, but it's a very roundabout way that involves a lot of phone calls. And luckily, because our school systems use the shelters, when we lose power, Larry gets an email. I get a phone call, he says, hey, you have a problem with your radios, I call into nine-one-one, nine-one-one then calls the sheriff's office to say, hey, are we actually operational, functional? That's how we're finding out, and at three o'clock in the morning, when no one's using the radio system, you could be down and not even know it. And we have run into that before in the Lake of the Woods specifically, since I've been here by ten years. It does not meet the nationwide AC P twenty-five standards, so we do not have interoperability. The sheriff's office and the nine-one-one center struggle to speak to each other. How do we come up with work-around ways to make this happen? Absolutely, but it's not include, um, it does not meet any industry standard that is out there. As I talked, as I was presenting my CIP stuff that I alluded to in our biannual report, the nine-one-one dispatch consoles are coming to an end of life, December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. And also the mobile radios in the M C S two thousands that Fire and Rescue use are also the end of life. So as we replace these, uh, replace these equipment, the new equipment that's coming out onto the market has to be P twenty-five compliant. We're also finding that grant funds, um, state and federally, if we don't purchase P twenty-five equipment, there is no grant fund available. So the direction basically is you have to have an interoperable standard, and they've chosen to have this P twenty-five standard to follow, is the state guidelines and the federal guidelines. The state has also come out and mandated that July first, two thousand and fifteen, you shall and will be interoperable. I'm lucky to say that Orange County, not just the nine-one-one center, but also the sheriff's office, was able to enter into grant funding and meet that mandate, um, by purchasing the radios calmly and, uh, entering into that regional grant. But again, it makes it very difficult, um, we can't even talk to our learning units properly, as we need to, through the county. Well, how calls for service impact us, is that we, in fire and rescue, only have three channels. As the number of calls goes up, we've got no redundancy, and how do we handle more than one large-scale incident? If we have two auto accidents in the county, it ties up the fire and rescue system, we are done, we max out at this point. The sheriff's office ran into the same, um, same type issue, they have one digital repeater in the, to serve the whole county. Now they have, they need to do a SWAT team raid, they need to do something after hours, so if they've got a large-scale incident, again, now, they, they don't have the, um, channels that they need to be able to function and operate effi- as efficiently as they need to. The first study that was started on to come up, kind of identify some of the problems that we were having, was done, started back in two thousand and five. The results from that study were actually published in two thousand and seven. And throughout the county, many areas are identified as strong, good, weak for portable coverage. Such as in the town of Orange, the portable co- portable coverage is better than the tech, out in the lake or out in the area of Bobbysville. Um, they did identify specific areas of the county, and I talked to the True Value, the in-building, um, just there is no coverage in that. Uh, Route thirty-three and Route twenty, uh, the sixty-five percent success rate for portables to connect to dispatch. So again, that's not where we would like it to be, it should be at ninety-five percent if we were to actually be designing a radio system, those are the specifications that we would give to a vendor. We have multiple different repeater sites and different channels, um, the dispatches physically have to switch repeater sites and switch channels. And I have a, a diagram on the next, to kind of explain this, how this actually works. So if a call is toned out in the Lake of the Woods area, typically the Lake of the Woods units will get on the Lake of the Woods repeater, cause it's closest to them. They will hit that repeater and the transmission is broadcast back to, into, into Orange. Hopefully, the dispatches have also selected that they will talk on the Lake of the Woods repeater. But if they're not on the Lake of the Woods repeater, they miss that radio traffic. Now the next call could be a Clark Mount, in, in the town of Orange, so now they're having to switch between multiple different repeaters to talk to units. So again, you can see how when you bring in the human element, and not saying that they, they do a bad job or anything, but it, the net result is a higher rate of, higher rate or risk of disruption in communication between field units and dispatch. Again, because you're having to switch channels, you're having to switch repeaters, and hopefully you guess the right repeater that that unit is on. A, if a structural fire happens, and, um, and I'll use the fire that we had last week, we used the Gibson Mountain repeater. But mine run was dispatched to the call, they couldn't hear any of the traffic that was going on in Gibson Mountain. So they had no idea that they were placed in service, so they kept on responding to the call, even though we didn't need them. So again, you can see this confusion that it does create between the units. Orange County Sheriff's Office is also experiencing the same issues with portables, um, and then, um, Michael Task has talked to it and given you specific examples of one, he's had deputies out in the field who have no portables. Um, they issue their deputies cell phones so they can contact dispatch, um, which is not the best way to be contacting dispatch if there is an emergency or something going on. Again, we've talked about the limited redundancy to the system, and when we did do the narrowbanding, um, that was state, uh, federally mandated by the FCC, what ended up happening, and they call it a radio footprint, at one point, our radio footprint was this big, when we narrowbanded, it became this big, which has just made that coverage issue also more prevalent, which happens to be on the outskirts of the county, which is where we were already having the issues to begin with, which unfortunately does affect the Route two car, it's a different thing. First response in citizen safety is at risk until our new system is online.
Have we ever had, either in the sheriff's department, or, uh, with fire and rescue, anyone ever, any citizen ever harmed, or, uh, uh, or, or injured, or any, uh, responder hurt because of our system?
I can't speak to fire and rescue in the last three years, and, uh, as the sheriff.
I don't know that I can remember anyone being hurt, I would say the potential has been there many times.
Okay, so we've got the potential, but we, we haven't had any, okay?
The most recent was a heroin addict we chased by foot into a lamey's restaurant behind sheets and had to fight him in the restaurant with no radio communication. Um, that, that was just, that month ago, month and a half ago.
Month and a half ago.
Okay, alright.
I don't recall any that specifically. Well, I can go back a ways, I didn't get hurt, but I didn't have no radio communication on Buzzal Hollow, and I didn't know how to fight the man in the middle of the road, so. They're, they're out there, the question.
I understand, I understand the risk, and I understand the frustration.
Okay.
Very, very intimately.
In two thousand and seven, we did propose some recommendations for us to help us with the increasing coverage, but ninety-eight percent, um, for the mobiles and ninety-five percent of coverage for the portable. Um, it was identified that several U-teams that aspire to need it, it was identified that we should be switched to a trunking system. Again, this would give, help with that capacity, that we get more than one incident in the county, we're actually able to effectively handle it. Um, PM radio subscriber units, revisit identified areas of concern, evaluate options, seek advice with, of, with a consultant. Um, since we have done this, uh, we do have a PM set up for radio subscriber units. Unfortunately, um, transmitter sites never did occur, uh, we have not switched with a, a trunking radio system. And we are still today asking for the support to go out and work with a consultant to come up with long-term planning for this radio system, um, to help improve it, um, to what we have today. We did look at the history, and again, um, we were able to figure out that in FY oh-nine, um, these projects were put into the CIP funds for FY nine and FY ten, for eleven million dollars, to help cover the transition of Orange going from an an- conventional analog system to a digital trunk system. In FY eleven, the CIP was, was dropped, request was dropped to seven hundred and sixty thousand. And that was based on the introduction to the motor turbo initiative. As you recall, the sheriff's office, because they had the narrowbanding man- narrowbanding mandate, they had to do something with their equipment. Um, they effectively made the right decision at the time and did purchase the motor turbo system. It was then the next step, or the next phase, was to bring fire and rescue onto the motor turbo system. Um, this was never seen as a long-term solution, it was definitely seen as there's something to improve the system, but not fix it long-term. And again, seven hundred and sixty is a lot less than eleven million, so it seemed like the right path at that time. Um, the motor turbo initiative never happened for fire and rescue, and again, that was obviously due to the financial, um, everything that happened with the finances, you know, statewide, it was actually across the country. Um, since we have sat back there and started looking at this, we started asking questions about, we know that we're running into coverage issues, we know we have, we have met how much radio calling this radio system can handle. Um, I alluded to that the fire and rescue calls have gone up eleven percent, so we know they're using the radio that much more. So this year, we sat back and wanted to come up and develop a long-term plan for funding for two thousand and eighteen. To replace the radio consoles just in the nine-one-one center, this without going to a new building, just three consoles is about half a million dollars. If we did the whole new nine-one-one building and brought in the six consoles, as we talked about in the original plans, you're looking, you can double the math, you're looking at a million dollars just to replace consoles, that does not increase system coverage, it does not, um, fix any of the issues that we're still talking about. So it doesn't, we're not sure if that really solves our long-term planning needs, um, as the, as the future comes. Obviously, a new system, um, we want it to provide dramatic improvement in the public safety handheld performance by using multiple tower sites. We wanna be able to support many users on one system, not only with this, uh, public safety, but we can bring public work on, we can do it in schools. The towns of Orange and Bobbysville will be able to benefit. And as future radio technology comes at down the pipe, we can actually encompass broadband, wireless broadband, and microwave. So, not saying it's gonna solve all the county's broadband issues, but it's something we can definitely think about and look to, because the technology is changing to a cellular-based technology. That if there's broadband access for, um, public safety, then that same access could be there for the industrial part, could be there for the citizens. Definitely be there for the, um, for the schools and also definitely there for the IT department. So the shift of it is just not just focusing on kind of r- unit talk on a radio, but what is the long-term evolution? And the kind of the technology is actually called LTE of a true radio system. We'd like to try and re- reuse as much infrastruc- existing infrastructure as possible. Obviously, we will need to evaluate the three current tower sites there. And migration flexibility is easily supported as software development continues. One of the things that we have looked at is an open architecture system. Today, we are dictated by Motorola releases an end-of-life cycle and says this piece of equipment will be good on good in two thousand and fifteen. Guess what? We have to buy new pieces of equipment in two thousand and fifteen. A lot of the radio systems are now becoming IP-based and software-based. Yes, you physically still need a tower and yes, you physically still need a radio to talk on that system. Um, but it's a lot easier to replace a server every ten years than it is to replace a radio system every twenty days. So again, we're looking at this open architecture to, to move forward with this and looking at a standards-based system as opposed to a proprietary-based system. A new system, we would, um, allow us to meet the nationwide absentee twenty-five standard. That would make us eligible for grant funding also. Um, our towers would be linked to the nine-one-one center with redundant microwave links. So right now, if we went with this type of system, if Clark Mountain was to fail, the whole system doesn't fail. It works. It would be geo-redundant. So if a, a quake happens in Louisa, it doesn't affect the lake and the system can continue. We would add emergency features for first responders in distress and then call this an EA button. They can simply hit the button and it notify, send an emergency alert to, um, the radio dispatch consoles. It would allow us to remotely monitor our sites. So we would know, do we have power? Do we not have power? How long have we been on the generator? If a radio was to get lost or, or stolen, we can actually enable it or disable it. So we can turn it off and now it just becomes a people wave. Um, a new system would require eighteen-month implementation. So that's kind of why we're bringing it to the table today. We know there's a lot more ongoing discussion. We know we need more guidance, but it's not something that can be done over nine months. Some of the radio concerns that we have though, definitely need, need to be addressed and some short-term planning. Um, we want, like I said, we want to continue discussions, um, about the nine-one-one center because that will impact further radio discussions. If we say, yes, we want a new radio system, then we have to look and say, well, are we designing it so it can talk to here in the sheriff's office? Are we designing it so we can talk just to a new nine-one-one facility? So again, um, both of those projects are certainly applying the weight heavily on each other. We do want to hire consultants to plan effectively for migration to a trunking system. Um, technology, since this study was done in two thousand and seven, technology has changed. FCC mandates have changed. So I think again, we need to come back to the board. We know we have these, uh, some problems, but how are we really gonna, um, solve the long-term problem? And that's what we truly believe. We've gone as far as we can go. But we truly believe we can come up with an effective pro- um, project or solution. We do need to do that consulting. Uh, one of the, uh, projects we have been working on, as you see, is to move the Lake of the Woods tower actually out of the Lake of the Woods and place it on Valcree Road and add another digital repeater for sheriff's office and provide better coverage of firing in there. Again, it doesn't solve our long-term problems, but it helps, um, it makes some improvements that need to be done today.
Is that, uh, but that's not until, uh, you're talking about, uh, that's the two thousand and eighteen budget. There's nothing, you're not, that's, is that something you can do independent of the, of the whole, uh, uh, of the whole package?
Yes, um.
I'm thinking of, uh, uh, of trying to not necessarily stretch it out, but maybe move some of the stuff, uh, earlier, uh, and start gaining capability, uh, if I were to say instead of two thousand, uh, eighteen doing that, if I did it in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, uh, could I do it such that I'm not wasting money, uh, when I would eventually go to the, uh, the two thousand and eighteen?
Oh, please, sir.
I think we actually talked the other day about this and the consultant, we were talking about bringing in, bringing in quickly and see if, to answer your question.
Some of these kind of questions are, okay, alright.
Be viewed later. Am I correct in that way to answer that?
Yes, sir. Uh, Sheriff, uh, maybe this is a good opportunity for me to kind of jump in. I, uh, we spent a good hour plus, uh, last Friday, uh, for them to bring me up to speed about tonight's presentation, particularly the radio system because as your new county, you need to be up to speed on this. And, 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 and I'll give you at least my, my initial, um, understanding is that if, if Barbersville is at sixty-five percent and the acceptable standard is like at ninety-five percent, well, we're meeting the needs of, of the citizens and, 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 and the first responders. There are some, some deficits that we need to address. And, uh, Nikki is absolutely right. The technology has moved very, very quickly. And what I would recommend for you all to do is that this is a, you know, obviously a huge capital expense for the county. Want to be able to kind of manage this over several years rather than, than, than immediately. I do understand that there are some immediate needs that, that, that particularly out in the Route Three corridor, there's some immediate needs that could have some fixes. Um, the chief deputy, I think impressed upon me his, his frustration with working with vendors and, and, and things of trying to get some solutions. And what I would recommend to you all today is allow me to come back at your next meeting. Um, I want to, uh, be able to come back with a budget scope and, uh, schedule to be able to hire a qualified consultant that can essentially come in very quickly and look at the immediate needs, kind of triage the immediate needs, see if the solutions that the vendors, and this is somebody retained that represents your interest, the county's interest, not the vendor. Um, and, and see if the solution put forward is, 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 is appropriate. But then also give clear guidance on where next to go, um, with this project. Uh, I fortunately, coming from, from where I was at region two thousand, they run a regional radio system. Just went through a change out of the entire system. In fact, within the last, uh, twelve, eighteen months. And I'm familiar with how a regional radio system, I think there are a lot of parallels here in Orange because of the top topography, because of what you have faced. The other part is, uh, I think with the right consultant, there is an opportunity. If you're expending these type of dollars and you will have to, I mean, I don't think this is a discretionary kind of thing, uh, given the life safety for the first responders. There is a potential to be able to use this to bring broadband into unserved areas. If you start thinking about voice and data, what we've been talking about is voice communications. But if you move this into a microwave system, there is a lot of capacity in this microwave back halls to carry data. You would want your first responders to be have data capabilities. If there's data capabilities, then a private provider, Verizon, Telos, could also provide LTE wireless broadband service because you're already providing that service in the rural areas for the first responders. And so there, the, a number of communities have, have looked at this when I, on the governor's broadband advisory council, which I serve. This is one of the things that I've certainly been advocating is public safety has requirements. Why not see if we can kind of solve the, the last mile problem in rural areas as well? So with having said all that, I think my colleagues who are all in agreement maybe is, is for us to kind of huddle for the next two weeks and come back to the proposal for you all to at least gauge somebody fairly quickly.
What, what does that do with, I, I'm trying to think about the timing again.
Oh, yep.
Does that, does that move us forward or, or, or delay? I'm not quite sure.
I'll, I'll put it to you this way from, from my perspective. I'm a cop. I'm not a radio person. I know how to operate a radio. It's kind of like a mechanic in a car. I know how to drive a car. I want to work on one.
Right.
Um, I need somebody to tell us what we need and have what's the best thing in our interest. And I don't want a vendor doing it because we've been dealing with a vendor for over a year now. And that vendor has not helped us one bit.
Mr. White, to your point, uh, Glenda has provided me with what you already have appropriated i- i- is, uh, just underside four hundred over the years. What I'm proposing to do is that there's a solution out there for an immediate fix for some of the things that the vendor has proposed. Just getting a third party say, you know, that looks reasonable. That is certainly not a three hundred thou- forty thousand dollars fix. That may be a, uh, seventy-five, a hundred or something. Get that done first, but then also have this consultant start developing a plan for the larger conversion. So my intent is to take care of the immediate problem because you got to take care of that and just have a validation that that's a right fix and, and not looking for any, any type of appropriation.
Well, I think the model that we use with insurance is where we have a, a, a consultant representing our interests aside, apart from the insurance companies, that model needs to apply here. That, that, when I saw the consultant, I was concerned that you were talking about vendors, uh, basically they're salespeople and that.
No.
As Sheriff says, we know how that moves.
Absolutely not. Yeah.
I've, I've had to get this man more blood pressure medicine for the last year.
I, I would underscore the chief deputy impressed upon me his frustration with, with the vendor. So, um, I don't mean to short shift this presentation that Nikki's prepared for you or anything like that, but I, Sheriff Lee, I jumped in.
Well, it sounds like you've identified, you collectively identified the right next step, which is, as you suggest there, it seems to me that's what, that's where we are.
I, I'm pretty confident we can come back in two weeks and let you know what we come up with.
As, as I look at this, we're talking close to nine million dollars uh, in, uh, four years. So that's, this alone is, you know, like two and a quarter million dollars a year. Uh, I'm just averaging it out. Uh, I think we need to look at this and the other big items. And I'm not sure that, uh, this isn't the biggest one that we need to address. And make a decision as, yes, we're going to do something about it. We are going to do something. We are going to move the nine-one-one center or we're not. Or we are going to, you know, we, we've got to make a decision then. And then because of sequencing, uh, you know, i- it may very well be, I need to spend two million in sixteen and six in eighteen. I mean, there may not be another way of stretching it out or there may not be other ways of doing this. But I think that, uh, uh, the first, the first thing we need to do as a body is decide, are we going to do these? Are we gonna, are we going to, and I'm, and I'm looking at this, uh, uh, two thousand and eighteen date and the, uh, looks like we don't have any choice.
We can replace our radio consoles in eight, in two thousand and eighteen at the cost of half a million. So either way, two thousand and eighteen has carried a big price, Justin. We want to make sure that we explore all avenues so that we, that's a lot of money. Is that the best place to spend the money? Or is, or is there a funding mechanism or a better plan for this?
I mean, uh, uh, when we say that, uh, that we're not going to be able to get any grants if we're not using P twenty-five, uh, if the, uh, in the existing pro- you know, how long could I live with the existing circumstances? It's pretty bad. Uh, how long can I live with it? Uh, and I have, at some point, I have a point where I've got to say, I can't live with it. I mean, either I'm no longer, uh, we're getting the end of life on, on consoles. That's, that's, that's the one thing that's, that's critical. But how about any of these others? Where do we go? Do we, do we, do we tell him to prepare a plan that, that addresses this? Or do we say, I'm sorry, we're gonna keep everybody down here and we're just gonna stretch things?
I, I can tell you, having been involved in emergency services in the county since the inception of what we have that's called a radio system now, that was an ill-planned, ill-installed system. It was outdated. John, you were around then. Uh, it, it is, it has been a bad system from day one. And it was in fact designed by the manufacturers, not by someone working for the county. Uh, things are not going to get any better. I know for a fact, uh, Walmart, you have zero cell service. I don't know what the radio coverage down there is currently, but cell service has gone down there. Your population growth in that area is definitely increasing. And with what we're looking at for the Route Three initiative, I feel we truly have to move forward with the plans for a state-of-the-art system that's going to protect the citizens, that's going to protect our first responders as well as the dispatchers. I, I don't want to spend the money, but I,
Okay, if we, if we decide to do that, do we have concurrence?
Well, I, I think it's, it's not an issue of, uh, we're talking about can we live with it? I think at some point, somebody's not going to live because of it. So.
I mean, one of the things when asked that question is anybody been hurt? Because they're going to say yes.
That, that's what I'm afraid of too.
Well, I mean, I, I, I think the next step is to get the additional information and at least the beginnings of a plan or a way forward. Uh, we don't, I don't, I don't think we know at this point what these numbers look like. They're big. I don't think anybody will deny that.
They may actually drop.
They might drop, but they might all have to be at one time. I mean, this might be something that is completely out of our ability to fund from cash flow. We might have to look at other, other ways of doing it if it's a one-time expense. On the other hand, it might be able to be spread over multiple years. I don't think we can answer any of those questions at this point. And hopefully with additional discussions you guys have and the consultant and, and looking at, at other options, uh, we can begin to answer some of those a little bit better.
What was, uh, how much were we looking at for the first year for, for consultants?
Oh, uh, well, I don't know if the current plan had that built into it.
No, it didn't.
There's a, there's three hundred and eighty-five available for radio communications projects. Some of them have been earmarked for specific things. Uh, others generalized, but I would think, uh, looking to, to Glenda, I think it's made available for this project.
Right. The three hundred and sixty is, um, is appropriated specifically for this project. Um, there's another twenty-five that we appropriated in the current fiscal year for this, um, what we thought was going to be the Band-Aid approach for the sheriff's department. So that's where.
So we've already appropriated three sixty?
Three sixty plus is twenty-five. So three eighty-five in total.
So, and that's all, and that hasn't, we haven't expended any of that yet? So that's available to get started. So we have the money now.
And what I would, yeah.
What, uh, to, uh, if we want to start expending it, we need to talk about, are we gonna eventually get to these, the movement of the nine-one-one center and the, uh, and redo, redoing the radio system? Those are two big questions. And before we start expending funds there, we need to decide, are we gonna do that? So we tell them the consultant to do the right, what he, give him the right task.
The, the other question, when you were talking about all the different agencies, has anybody, any thought been given to Central Virginia Regional Jail?
Well, we did identify them also. Um, we were looking for the board's direction before we started approaching other. Um, and because we didn't want to say, hey, we've got this solution, but, uh, we need the board's direction to know which way to go, um, so we can look at that. Um, we've looked at, can we join Almanac System? Can we join the Farcian system? Louisa's getting ready to do a radio upgrade soon.
I was going to say, I, I was approached by Louisa, uh, a couple of months back, but the possibility of somehow working.
So, like, those ideas have been put out there, but we don't know the direction.
Right, no, I, I, I know. I just, um, but a regional, more, the more people we put into it, if it's a properly designed system, the less it's going to cost everyone. E- e- each individual jurisdiction or authority.
Well, I, I mean, maybe one of the sort of places to start or ground rules or whatever you want to call it is that we, we don't just look at this narrowly as nine-one-one sheriff and fire and rescue. That, I think that would be a mistake. I think you look at it in terms of what is the, what is the right technology and therefore cost-effective solution for all of the needs of the county, uh, as well as these departments, maybe the towns. You know, maybe the schools play in this, possibly the jail and, and, and maybe truly regional. I'm not sure about that one. That adds a new layer of complication, but, uh, i- if, if a tower at Lake of the Woods could also serve parts of Culpeper and, and Western Spotsylvania and make sense, uh, then it, it's at least something we should be aware of. So I, I think it, I, I wouldn't narrow it to just the, just solving the problem you're presenting tonight, but look at it a little bit more broadly. Which it sounds like that's what you were.
My, my, I guess is one, the, the immediate is that there is a solution to put forward to deal with some issues out on Route Three corridor. And at least getting a third party that represents your interest is a valid. And at least getting a third party that represents your insurance to validate, yes, this makes sense, or may change this, or whatever, but to say, before you spend, and then we should have, should have sufficient funds to make that immediate fix. Then the consultant's second task will be then to take an assessment and inventory, kind of a wide scan of where everything is from the county's communications. And then come back and report that and, and, and give you their, their expert opinion. And from that, then you all will start figuring out what would be the plan to be able to, to get to. Since you've got a hard date of two thousand eighteen out there, what will get you to a solution by that day? And whether that's meeting immediate needs just for the county or a larger regional system, or, you know, I, I think there's a lot of options out there. But I think getting an expert in here, a professional, technical, technical person can help sort through a lot of those choices.
So do we need to, uh, start, uh, putting out an RFP for the consultant now?
I would like for you to, to give me two weeks to go out and do some research and talk to a few folks that do this and, and, and check, and look at actually a couple of RFPs that I, that I'm familiar with. And come back and, and maybe even have a tentative budget schedule, that kind of thing, that we then, you all, if you, if you want to, then you give me authorization proceed. With the, retaining the consultant, not the system.
Nice try. I mean, I, I, I would support that approach. It makes sense.
So we don't need to where the next year's budget gets started?
This is, this with also the, the nine-one-ones, these are, these are big capital projects and, you know, you, my conversations individually with you all, and I think collectively, I think, I, I can, please. There, there are certain core functions of government, and particularly local government. Public safety i- is one of those core functions. And communications, vehicles, weapons, uh, life support systems are the tools of those. And I think, uh, you all are very interested in providing what is reasonable, uh, you know, what we can afford, but you also wanna make sure it's quality, that, that does, delivers that core function service. And I think this is one of the processes that I, that I, at least I can feel comfortable jumping in midstream and maybe giving you some help on, on starting down there. So with that, I have my direction. I think we all have some direction. All right. Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you for staying.
Thank y'all.
Putting stuff back. We're taking a quick break real quick. Why, thank you, Sergeant.
Should I bang with that one for you?
Raise, raise your hands.
Y'all got jokes.
What do we, what do we got? The next big topic is our, uh, is the discussion item on, uh, fire, fire code.
We've got, we've got appointments.
Board and commissions.
I've got a couple soon.
Well, yeah, I, I don't think anybody needs to be at the podium, do they, so?
No, just leave the table there.
Yeah, we're good.
Let you guys sit down when you come. Harass us, fire code.
Okay, next we have appointment of boards and committees.
I have, uh, two. Both of them in a sense reappointments. Uh, one is Thomas Graves. He's been filling an unexpired term, uh, of, of another Health Center Commission member, and this would, uh, appoint him for a full term on his own. And I've also spoken with Joan McClung. There's a situation where she's, she was redistricted out of four into two, and, and she's currently the chairman, uh, of the, uh, Library Board and has agreed to serve a term for District Two in her own right, which of course creates a vacancy for District Four. So anyway, uh, Graves for Health Center Commission and McClung for Library Board for District Two.
Okay, do we have any others?
No, I'm still in search of the appropriate person for District Four, either.
All right, uh, we. Do we wanna do the Juvenile Detention Commission separately or include that?
You have the CPMT.
You got, you got the, uh.
All right, well then I'll go ahead and nominate Mike LaCass for the, um, Juvenile Detention Center.
Okay. Any others?
And then what do you wanna do with the CM?
CPMT.
CPMT.
Uh, Ms. Ryan's couldn't stay, so I'm pinching it.
I would think that we oughta make that a separate motion.
Wow.
Because that's a whole batch of them.
I, unless, unless anybody's got any issue with them, I don't see where it really matters.
I, I would recommend, you know, a motion that would adopt the slate of Representative that is presented in her memo.
Yeah, well then I'll make the motion that we do that. Mixed in with all the other stuff.
Okay. Any further appointments? In that case, I would look for a, an eye.
Eye.
Everybody.
Uh.
I've got five eyes. That's one strange-looking individual, but. You what?
No, the minutes were actually reflected, uh.
The unanimous, but, yes.
Yes.
We understand.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, that would take us in onto the consideration of the implementation of the fire code. John?
Allison, do we need to adjust this mic for? You know, you can hear the, if you wanna record it.
Oh, I wanna watch you jump up and down.
Oh, you'll have me doing that in a couple of minutes. I was asked to prepare some information for the board, reference the state fire code. I sent you a memo attached with that memo, were several different documents. One was a, um, example of different types of permits that are issued if you adopt the fire prevention code. A s- a suggested budget, a chart that shows the different localities in the state that, um, have adopted the state fire code. And then basically a short little paper that talks about what a fire marshal's office is, a structure, the code, partial code versus full code. To give you a little bit of background information. The two biggest challenges that I see if we were to, um, implement the fire code is, one, it would require a new position within our organization. We do not have the extra staffing to be able to pick up that additional duties. The other is public perception, and what I'd like to do is address each one of these, um, separately. Obviously, we would need to, or at least my suggestion would be, we would have to add a position. The one beauty of this is, there is a grant available to, uh, as, through the assistance to firefighters. It's specifically related to, um, fire prevention, and especially startups. Um, again, you know, there's always, when you apply for a grant, there's a possibility you might or might not get it. But there is some grant funding out there that would help us start this position. The second challenge is that public perception. Through education, I believe we could address a lot of that public perception, and as I go through this, a short little presentation here, I'll, I'll get into how we're gonna address that public perception. One thing I think we do need to consider is the ISO, which is how our insurance rates are, um, determined. You know, you've heard of the different ISO rates, a six, seven. Obviously, the lower the number, the lower your insurance rates. That ISO rating system's getting ready to change. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna add a section called Community Risk Reduction, and you can pick up five and a half points through this Community Risk Reduction. Two point two of those points can be picked up through the code adoption and enforcement. Two point two percent through public safety and fire education, which we're currently doing, the career staff and the volunteer companies. And then one point, one point for doing fire investigations. It might not sound like a whole lot, but just to give you an idea, the town of Orange just went through the ISO process. They missed going from a five to a four by literally tenths of a point. So when you start talking four and five points, it can be huge as far as your ISO rating goes. The other thing I think we should, need to look at is the building official and the fire official should be working hand in hand. The building official sets the standard. In other words, when a building's built, there's certain building codes that we follow. Putting it very simply, all that happens is the fire official makes sure that that building is maintained in the fashion that the building official directed that building to be constructed under. It's essentially, we're enforcing would be something that's already in place. That's why a lot of times you'll hear the fire code is called a maintenance code. It's not anything additional, it's just ensuring that codes that are already in place are being followed. That building official and the fire official should be working hand in hand as far as plans reviewed. Especially as we talk about Route Three, as we develop, as we start developing plans, for whether it be for shopping centers, apartment complexes. If that fire official is involved in that plans review process, we're gonna make sure the needs of, um, the emergency service communities are met. I talked with the state fire marshal yesterday and, um, was getting a little information from him in Warren County, which has essentially almost the same demographics as we do. We have a population of thirty-four thousand, they're at thirty-eight thousand. They adopted the fire code about two years ago. And what they did is they took that first year and they made it an educational process, so they went out to the businesses and then, and educated them on the code. It wasn't this enforcement model, and in fact, their whole philosophy is education, not so much enforcement. And during that year, they introduced people to the code, what's expected, um, and, and got everybody on the same page, and, and they've had great success there. And what they're doing.
Well, how do you mean great success?
I'm, I'm, give me just a little.
Okay, all right.
About two more sentences and we'll be down to it. But what they're doing is they're going in their community, essentially taking over for the state, inspecting their schools, their nursing home facilities, and other high occupancy, um, high occupancy places, and through those inspections, in two years, they've never had to take anybody to court. They've never really had to write any notice of violations on the, the longest it's taken anybody to get in compliance with the code is three inspections. So they, again, through education, they're making progress, getting people to understand the code, make sure they're in compliance with the code. And it's been a very smooth process. It's not shutting businesses down, it's not fining businesses. Through education, they've had changes of behavior, and it's simple things like making sure your exit lights are lit, that we have adequate egresses, your exit doors are not chained. Your hood system, if you're a restaurant, is, you know, maintained on a regular basis, there's certain standards. But they have had great success and, um, it hasn't been this adversarial relationship. Through, so again, through this education, letting people know that, you know, if you build a building today, that building official has set certain standards that are already in place. And then the fire official comes behind and just makes sure that those systems are either maintained or kept in, in compliance with the code, for lack of better words. The other thing that they're doing, um, whether you realize or not, when the state inspects these different facilities, there's a fee associated with it. And what they're able to do is bring some of these fees back to the locality instead of it, it going to the state. So, again, you can, not that this is a, a huge revenue generator, but they're through fees, and that's something that you would have to determine down the, the road if you so choose to adopt the code, is there are fees that are recoverable, like for blasting permits, fireworks. Again, you've seen a fee schedule, you can set a fee for anything, but.
Do you need to set fees for all of these?
You don't have to, no, there, you can kind of pick and choose.
I'm looking at the list of permits that are required. Do you now have to have permits for all of those things?
That's if you choose to have permits. Those are examples of permits that you could require. Not, and again, that's.
Adopt the code without having permits for all of those things?
Greg, if you wanna jump in as far as the permit, permitting goes, um, you, no, you do not have to. If you adopt the code, it's not like you have to have every permit that's listed in this, this list.
If I may, the, the table you see there is the standard format used in the Commonwealth of Virginia to, for localities to decide which permits are gonna be used. And if they're used, what the fee schedule's gonna look like. The only permit, operational permit that's required is for explosives, which encompasses commercial fireworks. All the rest is optional. You can have a locality that doesn't issue any permits or fees except explosives. You can have another locality like Fairfax, which has a permit and a fee for everything in the world. You can add to this as far as you want. Just look at the Fairfax code, it goes on forever. Or you can look at another place like Warren or Goochland, where it's very limited in schedule. So you can make this, um, without cost to the businesses at all, or you can recover some cost with fees and permits. It's, that's the political decision you all would have to make. From an enforcement point of view, I have access and can enforce the code without permits or fees. From a safety aspect, I can do that, but permits and fees are a decision that you all have to make.
So, a permit can be used then as sort of an educational device, so the fact that this person knows that this is some requirement, that, uh, the permit is more in, informing him what he has to do with regard to hazardous material or something like that?
A permit allows for easier control of a process or a facility. I'll give you an example of, uh, a nightclub, for instance. Has a permit to operate because it's gonna have a high occupancy, um, an assembly area. Issue an occupancy, or an operational permit for that. If they continue to violate the, the code, and they don't listen to notices of violation saying, you gotta fix this, you gotta fix this, you gotta fix this, and they don't do it. Then you have one of two things. Either I give them a summons and then explain to the judge why they're not complying with the code, because it's a first degree misdemeanor to, um, to do that. Or suspend their operating permit until they comply.
Okay, but if a, if a person, let's say he's got a nightclub, and we decide we're not gonna do permits. Does he still have a certain, based upon the building code, does he still have a mer- a maximum occupancy?
Yes, yes.
So even though he doesn't necessarily have a permit, uh, if it says, if he's only allowed a hundred and fifty people in there, that's all he can have. Whether, and you can look at that, whether or not he's gotten a permit, and if he's routinely cranking two hundred and twenty in there. Then you can say, no, you're, you're, you're violating, uh, your, your building permit in terms of how many people you're allowed.
It's just a method of enforcement. Do you do, are you doing permits? Before you get to the summon stage, which is, uh, allowing easier on business owners and enforcement and, uh, full of Cali, it's easy.
Well, I'm thinking that, uh, if you use permits, as opposed to using it as a revenue source, you use it as an educational, uh, opportunity.
It's, it's also a, a right of entry facilitator. If someone says, no, I don't want you to come in right now, and you know it's because they're a huge violation that they're hiding it, well, you can't operate until I finish it, make sure it's safe. That, those situations are rare. I'll, I'll mention that to begin with. As the Chief was alluding to, this is all about education. If you form the right relationship with the business owners, you make sure that they understand you're just there to help make them safer. You're not there to bang them over the head with the code. Trying to give them education and improvement, um, methods along the way. Ninety-nine times out of a hundred, you're gonna be fine, and then everything's gonna walk. Gonna improve safety. But you're gonna have that one person occasionally who's going to say, I don't want to do this. And then it's up to the governing body here to decide, how are we gonna de- deal with those people? Are we going to issue a permit where we can, uh, suspend the permit to operate until we fix the problem? And then the other alternative is a summons where they could essentially take it, like a traffic ticket, that's the summons, go to the court and explain it.
Alright, I need, I need some help. And I think where I need help is, tell me why we need to do this here in Orange County. And tell me, out of the seven hundred calls that were referred to earlier, how many of those calls were actually businesses? How many of those calls were actually something that had you had this in place, you in fact, would you have even prevented something from happening? You have a maximum occupancy on every room right now that you can enforce, we don't need to do this. So where is the problem that we're having in Orange County today? And where do you see this helping fix that problem?
Well, Chief Roby gave the example of that business yesterday. The, the housekeeping in there was not up to fire code standards. They were keeping flammable liquids inside of the building, and, and that was a disaster waiting to happen. And, um-
Alright, but how is us having this position going to stop somebody from still doing stupid stuff?
Well, what it does is, what would happen is, and I'll just use as an example of a business that has poor housekeeping, is it not properly storing, let's say, flammable materials. They, by going in, inspecting, having the business owner address housekeeping issues as far as trash. I'll just use the example, some of these industrial facilities, as far as the pallets upside the outside of the building. You know, there's certain distances, you're supposed to keep that, those materials away from the building. But by doing that and addressing that upfront, that prevents something from happening. And it's very difficult to, to prove or disprove a negative.
I think, well, I think the question she's asking, they got seven hundred calls here, and how many of we wouldn't have had had there been an inspector or for some reason they had violated a code, and that's why we ended up with the, with the, uh-
And, and kinda, and kinda, I mean, I love the example that you just gave about the, um, um, you know, not storing stuff properly. Well, how often are you going in and inspecting these businesses to make sure they're storing stuff properly? So you go in, what, once a year? Okay, so what, how, where, how do they store stuff the other three hundred and sixty-four days a year? I mean, you know-
But again, if you can go in and you can educate that business, because a lot of times people don't necessarily understand why you're supposed to do certain things, like why you're not to store material within so many feet or inches of a sprinkler system. Because if you do store things too close, the sprinkler system's going to be ineffective. But by going in and educating, they're going to hopefully say, you know what, that's actually a good idea.
Educate people without this position, is what I hear you saying.
This, there's a lot of ways to educate. Do you actually have to have this position to educate? But by no means-
Right. I mean, and I, and I, I mean, I'm not trying to be, I still, I still haven't gotten to the point where this position is needed, because out of all the counties that are listed, none of them are around here, and none of them are small counties like us.
There's only thirty-four out of the ninety-six counties.
You don't see Louisa doing it, you don't see Green doing it, you don't see Madison doing it, you don't see Clark County doing it. You don't see comparable counties to us, um, doing it. So I need to, I, I, because, and I appreciate this, but I don't know that in the grand scheme of everything that needs to be done, that I would put this even in the top fifty things that we need to do right now. Because yet again, it's, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a position to, again, where we, I still haven't heard a number that this would have prevented, you know, uh-
Let, let me just ask a, ask a question, because I'm not going one way or another with this right now. What is it that you all do with patients' blood on a ambulance call that nobody else does? Or nobody else did? The blood serum checks?
Oh, the, um, testing for the sepsis.
Right.
The lactate testing.
How many other jurisdictions have done that?
Um, there's a few around, but they're few and far between.
Okay, does it make a difference?
Yes.
Can you give me an exact number of the difference that it makes when you do this test?
An exact number? No.
Okay, so it is subjective with the fire safety code, just as it is with providing the EMS service. And when you were talking about operational permits, it would be more like a hazardous use permit, which gives a business the right, when they pay for it, for storing flammable liquids properly, for operating a nightclub, which is not just your total occupancy load, but what they are physically doing in the building.
Oh, I mean, I, 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 I hear it, and I, and I, I hear that, I'm not saying that this is a bad idea, I'm saying that, um-
It's a lot of money, it's a lot of change.
And it's-
But it may, and I'm just saying, it may put us in a much better position with our citizens and our businesses if we're proactive with it. I, I'm just giving you a different slant on it.
No, I, I, I appreciate that, and, and while I am, um, fully capable of seeing that there is obviously, I mean, there's also a, a reason why government should come in and tell you that you need to not use incandescent light bulbs anymore, and you need to switch to, I mean, you know, my, my point is, at, at some point, do we at, at Orange County, once we go over this ledge, it's just kind of like the thing with having the outdoor fires, you know, there, there is a certain point where we are going to tip over, and, and we talk all the time about being business friendly and about being a rural community and loving our rural values and being able to go out in the backyard and burn a couple tires. I mean, just joking about the burning a couple tires. There, there's a certain point where you're, you know, you got a permit for this and a permit for that, and a permit for this and a permit for that. But we want to do a waiver so people don't have to do these soil and erosion, um, permits, and we want to do that waiver. Well, are we going to start getting, you know, because I, I think there's at least ten nightclubs waiting to come to Orange any minute now. I, I don't, I don't know. You know, you can't fix stupid with a permit. If somebody's going to put something flammable and, and you're not going to fix it with the permit.
I, I'm not saying that this is something that I necessarily agree with, I'm not saying I disagree with it. I can tell you from professional experience that applying portions of the life safety code and doing the maintenance section of it does make a difference. It has to be done properly. I agree with you. You know, government getting involved and telling people more and more. However, in this instance, it is for their safety.
Oh, well, that's, that's our favor. We're here for government, we're here to help.
No, I, it is, it, it's for theirs, I, and I say it's for their safety because, as you said, you can't fix stupid. But if you go in and let someone that is unknowing know something, they will fix it. I, I'm just, I'm being the devil's advocate to, to your side of it.
Oh, I, you brought it on up.
The thing to remember is the code still applies to these businesses if, if Joe Blow calls into the state mo- fire marshal and complain, makes a complaint about ABC Business, the state fire marshal can still go there, inspect the business, and, you know, those, they're, they're responsible for being in compliance with the code. So whether we enforce it or the state, um-
It's a, I guess-
That's what I was going to say. I mean, is this, what, you know, how many of those life safety boards would this buy? Which one would you do right now? Which posi- which position would, would, would you do? Would you do this fire marshal position? Or would you, um, buy a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that apparatus you just showed me a few minutes ago?
And again, I'm, I'm, I'm here tonight at your direction to bring you your information.
Yeah, but I'm asking you-
Oh, I, I know where I, I've got-
Good question.
I, you know, I, how many people's lives are you going to save with that stuff that y'all just showed us versus this?
I'll grant you that the instances where fire service can point to an instance and say, if the fire marshal had done his job here, lives would have been saved. There are instances that make the news internationally when things go bad. So it's low frequency, but high damage when it happens.
Yep.
The problem is, the only thing that makes the news is when you didn't do your job.
When you didn't do your job.
It's never that you did it right because it didn't happen.
The state fire marshal's office, great bunch of guys, I worked with them when I was in the academy. And they are overstretched, they inspect nursing homes and schools, getting in the school year only. State facilities like UVA dorms, but they don't do anything local or proactive, it's all complaint based.
Right.
That's right.
If we can go out and inspect and find, for instance, the hookup for the fire apparatus to hook up to the food line down the street, for their sprinkler systems to work off the fire engine, and find that somebody's put a coke can in that connection, that may have just saved the lives of the firefighters, we had to go in there to fight the fire.
Right.
So little things we can quantify. And hopefully, I can never point to an instance where I can go, that's an instance where somebody got hurt, but unless we try.
As, as fire investigator, have you found any, uh, incidents where, uh, there was a fire because of a, uh, somebody didn't do something, uh, that, that you might have found as a fire marshal?
No doubt.
Okay.
No doubt.
You have, you have found?
Here and, here and in my previous.
Okay, so you've sa- uh, I mean, I'm just asking here in Orange County.
Improper, improper use of heating equipment, whether it be, um, you know, portable heater.
Okay, so we've had, I mean, I know, I know we've had portable heater fires, and those were situations where they didn't, didn't, they weren't, didn't use them properly.
Too close. Improper storage of, uh, of combustibles.
They had the fuel ta- the, uh, can of kerosene right next to the heater?
The hood system's not being cleaned. There's, 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 you, the list can go on and on if you go back over the, over the years. But again, you know, we were asked to provide some information tonight and, um-
Let me ask you, I, I had a slightly different reaction when I went through this, and it, it was caused by the, the page that, uh, talks about the local adoption option, gives you two options, and it, it uses the words must choose between these two options. And one is limited, which is basically open burning and fire, fireworks and those kind of things. And the other is the whole enchilada. And, and my reaction was, it seems to me that there's an educational component of this that's really valuable. Where, where we could, we and the community and the businesses, particular, certain kinds of businesses especially, would, would benefit from, uh, being reminded or increasing awareness and, and, and these kind of things. And, and I could see, you know, it, it being worth the time and, and energy to, to offer, maybe fairly aggressively in some cases, offer that kind of an education. But I couldn't get from that to the full adoption of, of this code, uh, including the enforcement, uh, piece of it. Because, I, I mean, I, the number I remember is there, there's something like eight hundred businesses in this county. Uh, many, admittedly, some of them are one and two-person operations, uh, but just take a number that's in the hundreds. A once-a-year inspection, which is all you could possibly do to even that number, it seems to me has even less value than, than sort of an ongoing education kind of program, or awareness kind of program. What are, however you want to lay it out.
And then we get back to enforcement, and that's a conversation unfortunately you haven't been on, but we've had stuff, we've got stuff that we're not in-
He has enforcement authority already.
But I'm talking about-
But in addition-
What are we going to do?
Yeah, that's right.
You know, we've had issues where there's stuff on the books and that isn't being enforced, so, you know.
How much would a public education specialist be per year?
I imagine you'd hire that like at a firefighter salary, and you might even be able to hire that just a little, um, a little bit cheaper.
When you say a little bit cheaper?
Um, I, I imagine, you know, you're, you're talking probably in the mid-thirties to forties and plus bennies to do, um-
But isn't that what the fire marshal would be doing in the, in the, uh, in the princ- even, you know, I mean, he's the guy who has the knowledge to be able to, to provide the education.
They have what they call public safety fire educators, and it's not necessarily, it's had the fire marshal's training, but there are programs out there that, um, allow you to, to teach. The problem is how, being able to reach the, the individual businesses.
Right, you get the Chamber of Commerce involved and, 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 and organizations like that. I mean, I, I, I don't know enough about this to make a suggestion one way or the other, but the thought that struck me was, I really like the educational component of this, and the outreach, I think that's a, that's a good thing. I'm not sure that, that the enforcement side of it, uh, and the cost of putting in a, in, in effect, a perm- a new permanent organization, I'm not sure that, that, that we justify that, uh, at this point. I saw Fairfax had it, and Albemarle had it, and, and a few others. Sure, I, I could see you spreading that over, you know, hundreds of thousands of people, uh, all of a sudden.
Fairfax's fire marshal's office is actually a revenue generator on top of what, but again, they, they have permits for every conceivable situation that you can think of, and that's, that's not what we're suggesting, but, um-
Well, that's what, I, I would like to see some thought given to what, how could we benefit from the educational and awareness and outreach part of this? If at all, I mean, maybe, maybe you have to have the enforcement and the whole piece, I don't know, but, uh-
But if you're going to have the, if you're going to have the education, getting the person out to do the education means you're spending the money on a, on a body, maybe not quite as much money.
Depends how aggressive you are about it. I mean, you could, you know, you, you could meet twice a year with the Chamber of Commerce, convene the audience and spend, you know, thirty minutes on some high points. That, that's a very modest step, I acknowledge, but it's a step.
Or you might have, uh, you know, uh, offer your services for anybody who wants to invite you and to, to look at the, uh, the safety of your, uh, your facilities.
Even that, I think, is something that, an awareness that, that, that sort of changes the mindset from enforcement to, to truly, I'm from the government, I'm here to help you, uh, and, and, and go out and, and build a reputation of visiting a site and making positive recommendations and, and the like. That builds a lot of goodwill and, and frankly, does a lot of good.
And again, I'm using the example of Warren, that's how their whole program is based, that it's based on education, it's not based on enforcement.
But they, they started it with the, the, uh, implementing the, uh, fire, uh, fire prevention code such that it's now a law hanging over everybody's head, as if we said, okay, we've got somebody trained, we're going to take the opportunity for him to go and educate the public, but we don't have a law that says you got to do this.
The, the law is there.
I mean, the law is already existing.
The law is there, it's just who's enforcing it.
Understand, but now, but now let's take, uh, he goes in, somebody, somebody asks you to come in and inspect, okay. And you see something that is a flagrant violation, you tell them that they should, they should be correcting that. Aren't you obligated as a, uh, public citi- public official then to push to make that happen?
Yes.
Or report it to the state fire marshal.
That's right, and so, uh, uh, so that's, you know.
Are there any grants out there for public safety?
Yes, yep, that, that, um, fire prevention grant, there's a couple components to it. Some, one's research, one's new programs, and the other, I believe, is public education. I don't believe I brought that one with me.
I, I would mention too, that the education isn't the generic, um, you know, put out fire fi- put out forest fires or the generic fire prevention stuff you would give to a school or to a group. This is very specialized and individualized education, where you walk in, you inspect the building, you see what kind of fire suppression systems and alarm systems that they have. You go over with the owner, their facility, from your perspective, on how are people going to evacuate? How are you going to prevent, preserve the property in your facility if something bad happens? And it's very specific to the building design and the components that are there.
Yeah, I, I, this is not a, a slideshow that teaches everybody everything. You got to look at this one, uh, on almost an individual basis, I would agree with that.
So direction, cons- obviously, I think we've heard, we've heard some concerns, but, um, again, we were asked to put this together to give you some background information on this, and-
I would look at, uh, what kind of a education, voluntary education program you might put together.
And see, see if other localities have done something like that. I think that's a great way to start to, 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 like, the example you gave with Warren. They, they put a positive face on this, uh, at least initially, whether it's stayed that way, I don't know.
Well, the, the second component to, um, Warren is, essentially, their, their full-time fire marshal takes care of the inspections that the state was, the schools, the nursing homes, and a couple other, um, high hazard type occupancies. But they actually have what they call engine company inspections, and they actually did a hundred and ninety-two of those last year. And that's where, it's a voluntary program, the vi- businesses invite the, um, fire marshal's office, they send an in- The vi- businesses invite the, um, fire marshal's office, they send an engine company out, they come and do a, um, an inspection. And the majority of those, if any, if there's any issues, they're pretty much handled on the spot. Occasionally, the fire marshal would have to get involved, but again, it's been a very successful program. It's voluntary, the businesses actually request. So there, there's a couple different models, but we can definitely go back and research some more, research that grant a little bit more in depth. That's getting ready, um, to have some specific information related to the grant released very shortly. So we'll know what exactly is gonna be available.
Maybe even some discussion with, with a group like the Chamber, uh, i- is in order, just to say, just to bounce the ideas off of them and see what kinda reaction they get from, from some of their members. If this is something that's potentially a service that, that we might need in the area. You know, uh, uh, who knows what the reaction would be.
All righty.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, with the board, is there a particular meeting you want them to come back with information? Or just do some work in the appropriate time, bring this back?
In appropriate time.
Thank you.
I'll put something, I gotta let you know when it's ready.
Thank you, John.
I don't think that you.
Okay, funding requests from the Rappahannock River Basin Commission for rain gauges. Two-person rain guy. This is dressed to Julie, let's send it to her.
Why are we paying as much as the rest of the jurisdictions, when they have three and four sites in there?
Um, I don't have an answer.
Damn good question.
Yeah, I just happened to see that where Culpeper County has, I believe, four sites, if I counted correctly.
Well, I wasn't convinced we had any.
Four.
You thinking Raccoon Ford is on the.
Ford.
But I.
That is my big.
Which side of the river is that up? Cause Raccoon Ford is on both sides.
Both sides, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but ge- even giving them the benefit of the doubt, we have maybe one site. And Culpeper may have as many as six sites.
The question is, where does all that water run?
Well, that's true. That's my only question, is the.
Is, is, I mean, as far as I understand it, there was some proration on the, on the number of the sites based on the river mileage or the.
Right, why, uh, you know, are we contributing to something else or specific? I mean, the way it looks, we're contributing specifically for the construction of these sites. And we may not have a single one of the sites in our county.
And what does this do for our county?
Would benefit, uh.
Yeah, in other words, are, are we talking about, uh, rain gauges that'll tell us we got trouble coming?
Well, I remember when we talked about it. Didn't we, didn't, there were, there were spots in Orange, I don't see any here.
Yeah, there's supposedly one up, uh, in the summers, in the Somerset area on Rapidan.
That's not, but that's not in this river basin though.
So that just knocks.
I don't think that.
Yeah.
I don't think that's.
But, um, I'm trying to remember, it was Greg that was talking about this. And I thought we actually had sites in, in Orange.
But why is that something different?
I don't believe it was Greg, I believe it was gentleman from.
That, Greg Welchens.
Oh, okay, yes, yeah.
Yeah, not, not that Greg.
Okay, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's, that's exactly who it was.
New guy mistake.
I, I know.
Yeah, and that has nothing to do with this.
Yeah.
That's different.
Um, let me make a suggestion to the board, uh, Mr. Eldon James, who I, I know is the gentleman, uh, for the, coordinator for the commission. Um, let me find out some answers to a couple of these questions. And they're looking for an answer by the end of January, so that gives your last meeting in this month an opportunity for you to reconsider or further consider this. And maybe get some more information, if not, even maybe a presentation by him or a briefing, a quick snapshot, if you want somebody in person.
I don't think we need somebody in person.
Okay.
Yeah, unless you wanna dispense with this now, I mean, you, I don't wanna.
Well, no, but I mean, he can just answer the questions and you can just let us know, doesn't even, I mean.
Yeah, if, if there's something there that we've missed or forgotten, then.
It's just, and I'm gonna articulate the questions, as I understand it, is if everybody's sharing equally with the gauges, the, the number of gauges may vary by, by locality, but.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with the gauges, you know, not necessarily being in Orange County. But the point is, if the water, if we're worried about the emergency flow into Orange County, then maybe I'm more worried about it whether the gauge is in or out of Orange County.
Well, if it's, if it's above us and it's water coming in, yeah, that's something that.
We could worry about, and we'd be willing to pay for some of it.
Which precisely would lead to why it's equal shares across, across everybody, cause everybody's.
And yeah, there, there was just nothing there that gave us, you know, hey, you're a member, so we want equal portion from you.
You got some of that yesterday.
And if I look upstream of the Rapidan, at least, I don't see a gauge.
Let me, uh, contact Mr. James, find out more information, and I'll come back on the twenty eighth.
Yeah, see, see if you can figure out what, what we learned that we need to know.
Yeah, what, what is it gonna tell us? What are those gauges gonna tell us?
And why we need to know it.
Okay. All right, I will do that. Good.
All right, uh, anything on the information items?
You're right.
Committee reports. All right, if not, we move to calendar. Uh, formally schedule the retreat for the fifteenth and sixteenth. Anybody got a problem with that?
Uh, just, uh, one, one information, bit of information that, uh, Ms. St. Clair and I talked, uh, yesterday morning, uh, for a while, or Monday, I guess, yeah, Monday yesterday. And coming up with an agenda which we should be able to kinda frame out, where some of the things that you all can, uh, work on and accomplish for the, for that retreat, so. I think the Saturday and the Sunday certainly were fitting with, with Tyler and I, we talked about.
All right. That date works.
Yeah, I gotta leave early on Sunday, but that's okay, it still works.
Okay. Uh, last thing then would be reschedule the public hearing for the private road standards for February twenty-fifth.
Sure thing.
About hearing any complaints, that would be good then.
Sure thing, boss.
You two watched The Green Mile in the last week.
No, I just loved that movie.
It's, it's been on AMC the whole month, I've seen it about three times.
Been watching my TV recently.
I, while I was sitting around, yeah, I've watched the whole, like, Home Alone, The Green Mile.